Thank you for your patience, everyone will get started. Good evening, everyone. My name is Anthony Torrias and I am the Chair of the Planning Commission. Welcome to the Planning Commission meeting. Please remember to turn off your cellphones. The parking validation machine for the garage under City Hall is located at the rear of the chambers. Following roll call during the summary of hearing procedures, we will review how the public may provide comment during today's session. At this time, please join me in rising for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll now move on to roll call. Vice Chair Cantrell. Commissioner Barocchio.
Here.
Commissioner Bondal.
Here.
Commissioner Bickford.
Here.
Commissioner Lardinois.
Here.
Commissioner Olivario. Commissioner Rosario.
Here.
Commissioner Young. Myself, here. That is six, so we have quorum. Alright, we'll now move on to summary of hearing procedures. If you want to address the commission, please fill out a speaker card located on the table near the audiovisual technician and deposit the completed speaker card in the basket. There are also speaker cards in the rear of the chambers and at the side entrance. The procedure for this hearing is as follows. After staff's presentation, applicants and/or appellant may make up to a five-minute presentation. During the public comment period, the Chair will call out names on the submitted speaker cards in the order received for those members of the public who attend in person. As your name is called, line up in front of the microphone at the front of the chamber. Generally, each speaker will be given up to two minutes for public testimony and speakers using a translator will have up to four minutes. At the discretion of the Chair, the time allotted to each speaker may be changed depending on the number of items on the agenda, number of speakers, and other factors. Speakers using a translator will have double the time allotted. After the public testimony, the applicant and/or appellant may make closing remarks for up to an additional five minutes. Planning Commissioners may ask questions of the speakers. Response to Commissioners' questions will not reduce the speaker's time allowance. The public hearing will then be closed and the Planning Commission will take action on the item. The Planning Commission may request staff to respond to the public testimony, ask staff questions, and discuss the item. If you challenge these land use decisions in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at this public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. The Planning Commission's action on rezonings, prezonings, general plan amendments, and code amendments is only advisory to the City Council. The City Council will hold public hearing on these items. Section 20.120.400 of the Municipal Code provides the procedures for legal protest to the City Council on rezonings and prezonings. The Planning Commission's actions on conditional use permits is appealable to the City Council in accordance with Section 20.100.220 of the Municipal Code. Agendas and staff reports for this meeting may be accessed on the city's website. We'll now move on to call to order and orders of the day. Before we begin, I want to remind the Planning Commission members and members of the public to follow our code of conduct at meetings. This includes commenting on the specific agenda item only and addressing the full body. Public speakers will not engage in a conversation with the Commissioners or staff. All members of the Planning Commission, staff, and the public are expected to refrain from abusive language. Repeated failure to comply with the code of conduct, which will disturb, disrupt, or impede the orderly conduct of this meeting may result in removal from the meeting. This meeting of the Planning Commission will now come to order. Alright, we'll now move on to public comment. Now is the time for public comment to the Planning Commission on non-agendized items. Please fill out a speaker's card and give it to the technician. Each member of the public may address the commission for up to two minutes. The commission cannot take any formal action without the item being properly noticed and placed on an agenda. In response to public comment, the Planning Commission is limited to the following options: responding to statements made or questions posed by members of the public, or requesting staff to report back on a matter at a subsequent meeting, or directing staff to place the item on a future agenda. Do we have any members of the public who'd like to speak on non-agendized items? If so, please come down to the podium at this time. Alright, I'm not seeing anyone move forward, so we will move on to deferrals and removals from the calendar. Staff, do we have any items to defer today?
We do not.
Alright, in that case, we will move on to the consent calendar. Notice to the public, there will be no separate discussion of individual consent calendar items as they are considered to be routine and will be adopted by one motion. If a member of the commission requests debate, separate vote, or recusal on a particular item, that item may be removed from the consent calendar by the Chair and considered separately. The public may comment on the entire consent calendar and any items removed from the consent calendar by the Chair. Staff will provide an update on the consent calendar. If you wish to speak on one of these items individually, please come to the podium at this time. And on the consent calendar this evening, we have three items. Item A is the approval of our minutes from the September 11th meeting. Item B is CP 24-005 and ER 24-042, which is a conditional use permit to allow the conversion of an existing 1,907 square foot recreation building to an approximately 1,742 square foot single-family residence in a mobile home park located at 510 Saddlebrook Drive. And item C is CP 24-011 and ER 24-091, which is a conditional use permit for a drinking establishment in an existing approximately 1,100 square foot shopping center tenant space with outdoor seating located at 1137 South King Road. Are there any members of the public who'd like to speak on any of these items? Which item would you like to speak on? Feel free to come down. Okay, in that case, we will pull that item from consent to be heard separately. So we will call you back down to comment in just a second. Any other members of the public wishing to speak on consent calendar items?
Chair, I'd like to move to adopt the remaining consent calendar items.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Lardinois with a second from Commissioner Bickford to approve the remaining consent calendar items. If there is no further discussion, we will move on to a vote. Vice Chair Cantrell is absent. Commissioner Barocchio?
Yes.
Commissioner Bondal?
Yes.
Commissioner Bickford?
Yes.
Commissioner Lardinois?
Yes.
Commissioner Olivario is absent. Commissioner Rosario?
Yes.
Commissioner Young is absent. Myself, yes. That's six yes, zero no, and three absences, so the motion passes. And now we will move on to the polled item, which is CP 24-005 and ER 24-042. Staff, do we have a presentation for this item?
Good evening, Commissioners. We now have a schedule for the family mission. This is a conditional use permit to allow the conversion of an existing 1,907 square foot recreation building to a 1,742 square foot single-family residence located on approximately 34.27 rows acres size in a mobile home park. The project site is located approximately 160 feet south of the Saddlebrook Drive and Edenvale Avenue intersection. The subject mobile home park site consists of a total of 313 mobile homes on two parcels and includes 3,600 square foot community center and with a resident swimming pool located near the first ingress to the mobile home park and a 1,907 square foot recreation building located near the center of the mobile home park. Both buildings have game rooms and laundry facilities. The subject recreation building is the 1907 square foot recreation building that will be converted. The proposed residence will be occupied by an assistant manager to oversee the mobile home park site. There is no common open space requirement for mobile home parks. The subject mobile home park contains another 3,600 square foot center with a pool near the first ingress into the site that will be accessible to all the residents and they also visit that frequently. The project entails only interior layouts to the 1907 square foot recreation building and this will be converted to a 1,742 square foot residence with an attached garage within the same footprint. The project is consistent with the site's general plan land use designation of mobile home park and complies with RMH Mobile Home Park Zoning District Development Standards. Since there are only interior layout changes and minor door window modifications, this remains in compliance with the development standards. Staff followed Council Policy 6-30 Public Outreach Policy for pending land use and development proposals to inform the public of the proposed project. On-site signs have been posted on the project frontage and a notice of public hearing was distributed to the owners and tenants of all properties located within 500 feet of the project site. There was one concern raised very early in the review process stage by residents regarding the loss of recreation space and the owner of the mobile home park responded in a letter to the residents stating that the building was underutilized and not being used for recreation. The residents were using the larger community center with the pool more frequently and the subject building would be converted to a dwelling unit and utilized as low-cost housing for an assistant manager which will have a better use on the site. There were no additional concerns received since then. The project involves minor modifications and the project will include improvements within interior space in conformance with CEQA Section 15301 for interior existing facilities. Therefore, staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve this conditional use permit number CP 24-005. Thank you.
Thank you, staff. We'll now have five minutes for a presentation from the project applicant.
Yeah, we have applicant Julie Hill or John Worthing. Please come over and say a few words if you'd like at the podium. Thank you.
I'm John Worthing. I'm the co-owners of the mobile home park in question here. We currently have a mobile home in our park that we use for the assistant manager to live in and we have this building that has fundamentally become obsolete. It was built 60 years ago when the park was built and things have changed. For instance, most of the building is a laundry room and we have another laundry room in the park but most of the coaches now, as they've evolved and gotten newer coaches in, have their own laundries inside their own unit. So, we're thinking that A, if we can take this building that's not being used and make it a housing unit, then we can provide this coach that we own to the marketplace for someone that's relatively low to moderate income affordability, that we can add at least one unit to San Jose for lower-cost housing. So that's kind of our goal. Just a fundamentally better use of the resources.
Thank you. At this time, we'll have a public comment on this item, so any members of the public who'd like to speak on this building conversion, please come down to the podium at this time. Yes, any members of the public looking to speak on the conversion of this recreation building in the mobile home park? If you could just state your name for the record and then you'll have two minutes.
Dan Brennan, space 89. I think that was a misrepresentation. What's happening in our park is we have a manager who has significant negative charisma and is driving people out of these places with restrictions, law, rules, and just proximity that people don't want to be near her. What's happened is that was a pool room that we used to go to and it was a meeting place and it was closed off from us. We weren't underutilizing it. It was closed off. Locks were changed and the hours were greatly reduced and restrictions required us to go into the office and make a request to use it in the night the day we were going to use it. I get back from work after they close, so that's not possible. My understanding is that's our living space that we can go and utilize, that they're required to keep going for us. But more than that, I want to mention something. Right now, HCD has a lawsuit going with them. It's Alvarez Prado versus Rancho Santa Teresa and the lawyer at HCD is bringing this on for a number of these types of amenity reductions. Right now, 798.15 says that if you take away an amenity without a corresponding rate reduction, it's considered a rent increase. Right now, they get every year their 3%. And so, this is not an underutilization. They're driving us out. There's several factors that are in this lawsuit, one of which is that room, another one is the laundry room. There are several people who use it regularly and don't have laundry facilities and oftentimes get shut out, making it an irregular and unreliable thing, kind of forcing them to go buy laundry.
I think that's your two minutes. Thank you. That's the conclusion of your two minutes. Thank you. Thank you. Do we have any other members of the public who'd like to speak on this item? And if there are any other members, feel free to come down and line up behind the podium at this time.
I'm Chelsea Welch. I live in 270. I was the one who had the concerns earlier on. I've lived there 34 years of my life and, like the gentleman said before, they have deadbolted it. It was always used throughout the day and throughout the week. Up until, I think maybe a year, that they have locked it saying that it was under maintenance, that there was issues with some of the tiles or... There's a lot of things that they've given us excuses for. But it has been used regularly for 34 years that I know of. There was another issue saying that there was... Yes, I do admit that it needs updating, but it's still being used. It was a billiard room, well, two billiard rooms, but they turned it into a reading room that was always locked. There was no way to... Unless you go up to them and you have to give them a good excuse of why you had to use that room. But it has been a community resident or community hub for all of us for many years. There used to be sitting areas outside, which are no longer outside. There is an elderly gentleman who used to take walks and sit at the bench outside. The bench is no longer there, so I have not seen that gentleman. The billiard rooms were always used, mainly on Friday nights. There was said that it was a hub for teen activity. Yes, teens did sit at the bench and the only time that it was ever used as a party atmosphere was one incident which I called in. Thus, it was taken care of swiftly. The laundromat that...
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who'd like to speak on this item? Alright, I'm not seeing anyone move forward. At this time, we'll have another five minutes for the project applicant if you'd like to say anything else. Oh, sorry. Are you coming down to speak on this item? Okay, we'll have you give your comment before the project applicant. In that case, thank you.
Okay, my name is Jose Alvarez and I live in Rancho Santa Teresa. And I lived for almost like 10 years already over there and then we had a lot of issues with the manager. Even she closed the car wash and when I tried to talk to her, she's very rude with us and I think she's like racist or I don't know, my English is not too good, but I went several times to her office and she almost kicked me out and then she told me, "Go home." I say, "Hey, I'm a resident." "Get out of my office." I say, "Hey, you are so rude. You were for us. You had to listen to me. I'm not happy. You closed the garage." And she closed the clubhouse. I remember before when we have like a birthday or my family reunions, we rent the place to have a reunion family or something like parties or convocation with the family. And it's almost like six years we can use. We tried to rent the clubhouse and we filled the papers and she said the clubhouse is not ready. But she have the clubhouse, she have like his own storage. He storage everything. It's like a pack in the clubhouse and I don't know, we are not happy with her. That's why I should meet with the HCD. We make like complaint and we have a lawyer now. She tried to help us and let's see what can we do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, just a quick question for the current speaker, or previous speaker. So you said you were in communication with the Housing and Community Development Department and they got you in touch with an attorney. Is that separate from the lawsuit that the previous speaker mentioned?
With... Yeah, we live in the same place. What did you question?
But you said you were working with a lawyer from the HCD department.
Yeah, my name is Jose Alvarez. It's in the car.
Okay, yeah, but I'm just asking, that is separate from the lawsuit the previous resident mentioned?
It's the same.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we're the same.
Okay, thank you.
Same program.
Thank you. Another project applicant will have an additional five minutes.
Hi. I can't speak to any issues that the tenants have with the manager because I'd have to address those separately with both parties. So, I don't think that's really part of what we're here for. We bought, I took control of the property two years ago from my partner when he passed away and we've tried to improve. We've improved the main community center. We've added gazebos to our pool. We increased the deck size of the pool. We put in fencing. We've done quite a few things to try and make the park better and this is another one. There may be a possibility that we can rearrange this and maintain a billiard room. But we had so many problems in the billiard room that we had to lock it and ask people to come to the office and get a key. And we had one person request it, according to my managers, in the last year. And I don't know how true that is based on what I'm hearing here, but I can only take the word from my manager at this point in time. We'll do everything we can to continue to make our park a very livable place. We're very proud of it and we're very proud of the improvements we've put in lately. But we do have a beautiful community room. We have a big Christmas party there every year and we're trying to do our best and just trying to provide a little more housing for the city.
Thank you. We will now turn it over to the commission for discussion. Commissioner Lardinois. I'm sorry, if we could please limit, you know, any sound coming out of the audience so that we can focus on the discussion. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So, I want to thank the residents who came and spoke at public comment tonight. Before I was on the Planning Commission, I was on the Housing and Community Development Commission, which covers mobile home issues, so I understand the seriousness of, you know, residents' rights in mobile home parks and while it's not under the purview of this Planning Commission, I just want to ask some questions about that. So, first question is, is the planning department aware of any of the issues that were raised in public comment tonight?
No, Commissioner. We had just that one comment by Chelsea Walsh and then she did not respond after she received a response letter from the manager. So I assume that that was satisfactory to her.
Okay, thank you. And so...
Okay, we will reopen public comment, but please, if there are any other members of the audience who'd like to speak on this item, if you could come forward, we will not be reopening public comment again once it is closed. Thank you. Come down.
Alright, thank you for allowing me the opportunity. I live there. My name is Fred Gomez. In regards to the pool, yes, the pool has been given some nice outside pool furniture to use. They did expand the fencing, which is great. But I'm a regular pool, you know, user. I'm a prediabetic, so I try to get my exercise as much as possible. Pool hours have been highly limited. I've attempted to use the pool 8 o'clock, 8:30 in the evening, when everybody's gone. The pool's supposed to be heated. The heating elements have been turned off for multiple years now. One time, I had a major incident with security. I was there on a Saturday night approximately 8:35 or so. The pool hours are 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM. I enter the pool facility. The security comes and says that I have to leave, that the pool closes at 8 o'clock. There's a sign posting that closes at 10. That guy threatened to remove me from the pool facility in handcuffs. I said, "Call the police." He did not call the police. He got in my face. It was a major issue. I was very upset. Okay, so that's regarding the pool. The billiard room, I've attempted to use it many times on the weekends. It has a double lock. It's not available. During the weekday, you're supposed, what management is saying, "Oh, come and pick up the key." We are all given a common grounds key to use for the laundry room, which has also been closed in that expected place that they want to convert to an SFR. The water sink has been removed. It's often locked, very limited for use. So people, when something is very limited, you go to use and it's not available, okay, then you kind of just like, they're kind of like set it up.
Thank you. And then we will do one final call for any members of the public who'd like to speak on this item. As a reminder, we will not be reopening public comment again, so please come forward. Okay, in that case, we will turn it back over to Commissioner Lardinois and then after him, we will have Commissioner Bickford.
Thank you, Chair. So, sorry, same question again. Was the planning department aware of any of the issues that were raised in that previous public comment?
So regarding the pool, there's no pool in the existing space that is being converted, so I think that's out of this question. But the billiard room and game room, we were told that they were not being used. That's all.
Okay, thank you. And then, this might be more of a Housing Department question, but I'll ask anyways. So, mobile homes are rent-controlled under state law and as one of the commenters alluded to, you know, there's rules about reduction in service and how that impacts allowable rent increases. I'm not an attorney, so I'm not, you know, an expert on the specifics. But if this proposed project were to create a reduction in service, I guess my question is like, is that something that the city takes into consideration or that the city needs to make some recognition of? Could you just elaborate on that?
I think it probably has to be another entity that does the regulation of that specifically. From a planning standpoint, this is a permit to convert an existing amenity space to a residential unit. If there's compensation, other issues in regard to that, I don't normally think that's part of our purview. Just example, for example, once we approve this project to build the unit and changes, that's actually done at the state level. So it's kind of fractured process.
Right.
Yeah, so...
That's what I thought. So, I guess, another follow-up question. Has there been any engagement with the Housing Department about this park or this project in this case?
Not typically because it's not necessarily a conversion or a... It doesn't have the number of units that's usually within the purview and inclusionary housing. It's not a conversion of an existing unit or demolition of existing unit, so there hasn't been many comments from the Housing Department.
Okay. And is this item currently, has it been agendized for City Council yet?
It's a conditional use permit, so you guys would be the, this commission would be the final decision on this.
Okay, understandable. So I'm trying to find, I guess, I understand what you're saying that like the, you know, issues being brought up aren't necessarily... I don't know the right word, but like, are necessary, germane to this project here. But at the same time, I want to make sure that if there's an appropriate way to address it, that that's done. So, I guess what I'm, I'm spitballing here, so if it's, you tell me if this is appropriate or not. I'm wondering if we could defer this... if we could defer this, ask planning to help these members of the public get in touch with the Housing Department, which could determine either the Housing Department might have a role here, or get them the appropriate contact with the state, and just have that be done before we adopt this. What do you think about that?
I'm trying to think, we're okay with deferring it to see if it affects the decision necessarily within the purview of ours. And we can get back to you on that and then kind of convert with the Housing Department and see if there's anything within our permits that would talk about fee increases or any of those amenity spaces. And then bring it back for conversation. For deferral, you kind of have options on how hard you want to defer it, though. Do you want to do it for indefinitely or bring it back time soon?
I would definitely like to bring it back. I'm curious, how much time do you think would be reasonable?
My understanding is you defer it to two weeks from now. That wouldn't require a new notice. If it's more than two weeks, I understand we'd have to re-notice the project.
I see. And that would be-
Additional, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, because I want to make sure that, you know, while these issues may not be a reason to, you know, I guess, reject this project, I want to make sure that if there is a remedy available to the residents, that, you know, the city is pointing them in the right direction of that.
Yeah, I think we could defer it for two weeks. If it comes to an issue that, you know, it's not resolved by then, we can defer then require a re-notice anyways. So you, if the planning commission wants, they could defer it for two weeks and then re-agendize it for that hearing.
Okay.
And may I just ask quickly, what is the next step? Let's say it's approved today.
Then the next step is to see if any of those would acquire conditions as part of the project, or if there's additional policies that we need to consider that would address those eat or allow the applicant as well as the commentators that they want to agree to anything that they made with a condition as part of the project.
And this is the next, next step after, let's say this gets approved and they want to build, what's the next, what would be the next permit process?
It would be a building permit through the state because of mobile home parks.
And so that couldn't be addressed, these issues couldn't be addressed at that point?
No, because there would be no conditions as prior to the issuance of those permits.
Okay, so this makes sense then to defer and confer about this. Okay.
Okay. Thank you so much. I don't want to make a motion yet because I know my colleagues have comments too, so I'll leave it here. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Commissioner Bigford.
Thank you. I have two questions, and I'm not exactly sure who to address them to. But the one question is, I'm looking at the plot layout, and I couldn't actually tell which building we're talking about. Because I looked at all of the documents, and it's not the building next to the pool. It seems to be a, a building farther away. Do we have a plot layout that, that we could show so that we can have?
It's in the plans on the first sheet. Have you looked at the plans?
I did.
Okay, it's, it's marked in a, in a rectangle, that, that section. So that doesn't have a pool. You're right.
Okay. The second question that I have is, do we know if there are any contractual obligations between the tenants, the residents here, and the owner? That is, is this public space or, or amenity space part of any agreement that says it will be there or it will be maintained? Because, because what I heard from tenants was it's been locked for over a year. They haven't been able to use it. But I can't really tell if there's a contractual requirement to be able to use it.
It's a tough thing for planning staff to research, because the majority of mobile home parks were able to be operated and founded without having necessarily get a permit through the department.
I see.
So the regulations of those operations typically fall out the purview of the city. It's really the land use where we have some purview in terms of those regulations. So that's what we know now. But I mean, there's probably additional research we can try to do. But I would understand that that's probably our extent of our purview.
Okay. So I'm still, I guess I, I agree with Commissioner Lardinois that, that there's, it seems to be that if we are taking something away from a resident that had an expectation of using it, that we would either expect a reduction in, in their, their fee or a comparative something being made available to them. And I'm, I'm not hearing that.
I would say that we've had a couple of other projects that aren't mobile home parks that have converted their laundry rooms and created duplexes, that those things doesn't necessarily come up. It's just, it was part of the design of the project. And they're saying that, you know, to expand and build additional resolution, residential units, we're going to take these specific spaces, whether they're parking spaces, storage rooms or other laundry rooms, they were able to convert those over. But if there's something different specifically for mobile home parks, then that might be a little different. But at least that's my understanding from land use and other projects. Typically, that's not an issue we, we would have to weigh on.
Okay. And maybe if I could ask the, the property owner, because I, I'm curious. So this feels to me like it's an amenity that is going away. It seems like you have added some things around the pool and things like that. But what is really your take on this space that is no longer going to be available to the residents? And-
We have a lease agreement with every tenant.
That's what I figured.
And in our lease agreement, and every year we have to renew, we have to send out a form as to what the amenities are, that type of thing. The billiards room is not an amenity as a part of our park.
Thank you. That's what I was looking for.
Yeah, the pool is listed. We haven't put, I, we've looked at all the leases recently before we took this on to see if the billiards room was listed as an amenity and it wasn't.
Okay, thank you. That's what I wanted to know.
I just want to say this. I want to talk to these people. We may, we may, I've been talking to my architect. We may be able to have a small solution here if we can retain the billiards room and make the unit smaller. That would be something that we're open to. It's really the laundry room that has been abused by thieves and people. And it's really the biggest problem. We've had a lot of theft out of the laundry rooms. And we don't make a dime off of the laundry. We have to subsidize to even have it there. So if there's a way we can keep, retain the billiards room and keep it open, I, we will consider that after we talk to everybody. Okay? I'm sensitive to their complaints. And by the way, we're not being sued. We've got a letter from some attorney, but it's not a lawsuit. We've already addressed all the issues. We, we haven't heard, we, we had to sign up for two or three months. And we haven't heard a word about anything until this week. And if people had come forward right away and talked to us, then we could have discussed this matter civilly rather than in a antagonizing member here, manner here that I'm not open to. Okay? Thank you.
Please, we really can't have comments from the audience at this time. Thank you. Just saying, we can't continue to have people shouting in the audience if we're going to have an orderly meeting here. Thank you. Did you have any additional comments?
Okay.
Commissioner Lardinois.
Yeah. So then, let's, let me, let me try some language here. So I would like to move that we defer this item to our October ninth meeting and ask that planning staff communicate with the residents who spoke in tonight and the property owner. Make sure that the residents, or put the residents in touch with, you know, the appropriate government department for their concerns, whether that's the city's housing department or the state housing department. And try to see if the, there can be a resolution between the property owner and the residents on these issues. What do you think of that?
Yeah, I just want to be clear that we're not over, I mean, you're not asking staff to perform a duty that has nothing to do with the CUP and has nothing to do with, this seems like a civil matter, maybe between the residents and the property owner, and not necessarily under the purview of the city. So I want to make sure that we're clear on, you know, you're not asking staff to go ask HCD what is happening with, I mean, that's, so if there's going to be a housing issue-
But at least like put, put the residents in touch with HCD if HCD is the appropriate department here.
I mean, you can ask staff to do that. I don't think that that's their responsibility. I think it sounds like they're already in touch with HCD, right? If this is a city housing issue, staff can opine on that. But I don't think staff's role is to put people in touch with the state.
Fair enough. So what would you consider appropriate way to do this then?
If you want to defer it to find out and ask staff to consult with the Housing Department to see if there's any potential issues with services being denied or taken away according to what the city provides. Otherwise, I don't believe this would be a city issue.
Okay. Fair enough. No, thank you for clarifying that. So then, so let's, let's go with that then. Let's, I'll move that we defer this to our October ninth meeting and ask planning staff to communicate with the Housing Department about any potential city, any potential issues in the city's jurisdiction that were raised tonight.
Can I just add that, that what I would like to see happen is the property owner talk to their tenants and see if they can't come back October ninth with an alternate proposal that actually is, can be supported. Because I kind of agree that putting the, the, the planning commission folks in the middle of it might not be the best resolution. But I agree with the deferral point.
Yeah, I would absolutely like to see that. I don't know if it makes sense to put it in this motion, though. What do you think, Daniel?
You could encourage the applicant to reach out.
Yeah, yeah, if you want to make that part of your motion. I'm not quite sure if you're making the motion right now.
Yeah, yeah, yes.
Okay.
So yeah, then, yeah, let's try this. So move to defer this item to our October ninth meeting. Ask planning staff to consult with the Housing Department and determine if there are any, any of the issues raised tonight or within the city's jurisdiction. And ask that the residents and the property owner try to come to agreement on the issues raised tonight.
All right. Do we have a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion to defer this item from Commissioner Lardinois with a second from Commissioner Bigford. I'm not seeing any other hands, so we will move on to a vote. Vice Chair Cantrell is absent. Commissioner Barocia?
Yes.
Commissioner Bondal?
Yes.
Commissioner Bigford?
Yes.
Commissioner Lardinois?
Yes.
Commissioner Oliverio is absent. Commissioner Rosario?
Yes.
Commissioner Young is absent. Myself, yes. That's six yes, zero no, three absent. So the motion passes. All right. So that concludes the items that were originally on the consent calendar. In the interest of, you know, given the number of members of the public here we have for item five A, we will be hearing the general plan hearing first. So we will start by opening the general plan hearing for the 2024 cycle two. We have no items on the general plan consent calendar. So we will move directly into the general plan public hearing, item eight A, which is GPT twenty-four dash zero zero one, which is a city initiated general plan text amendment and update to text and maps in the general plan related to the airport influence, airport influence area overlay. Staff, do we have a presentation on this item?
Yes, we do have a presentation. Just one moment.
Thank you. Thank you. I will try to speak louder. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your patience. Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Laura Mauer, and I am the project manager for the general plan tax amendment for a proposed modified airport influence area and other associated tax changes. And this is for file GPT twenty-four dash zero zero one. I'm also joined today by Principal Planner Ruth Sito from the Planning Division, as well as Supervising Planner Ryan Shealan and Planner John Wilson from the Airport Department. So before you tonight, we have two recommendations for your consideration, for recommendation to the City Council. The first recommendation is to adopt a resolution to partially overrule the ALUC's adopted airport land use compatibility plan, airport influence area, and noise contours, and an overrule of the determination of inconsistency for the general plan tax amendment by the ALUC. The second recommendation is to adopt a resolution for the general plan tax amendment to approve a modified airport influence area based on the airport master plan and not the airport land use compatibility plan for the San Jose International Airport and other associated tax changes in the general plan and the DeRidon Station area plan. The associated tax changes will be discussed later. So for a brief recap of the background that was described in the staff report, the San Jose Mineta International Airport Master Plan and associated EIR was updated to add airport facilities, updated aviation demand forecasts, and produced new noise contours based on those forecasts. This major amendment to the airport master plan was adopted by City Council in April of 2020. After the airport plan was adoption from April 2020 to December 2022, the ALUC started work on updating the airport land use compatibility plan and the airport influence area to reflect changes in the San Jose Mineta International Airport Master Plan. The Public Utilities Code requires that the airport land use compatibility plan be based on the airport master plan. But when the ALUC released the draft ALUCP, the city became aware that the ALUC had inflated the aircraft operations by fifty percent and proposed an expanded airport influence area in San Jose. Between March of 2023 and March of 2024, the city met with the ALUC and county staff six times and sent several detailed letters to discuss the city's issues with the draft airport land use compatibility plan, airport, airport operations numbers, and inflated noise contours and expanded airport influence area. Additionally, the city provided the ALUC with a report by HNTB Corporation, an aviation consulting firm, which analyzed the airport's long-term aircraft operations forecasted in the airport master plan that found that the forecast was to be on target. Also, Caltrans Aeronautics sent the ALUC a letter agreeing with the city's approach to use the airport master plan data for the amended airport land use compatibility plan and the airport influence area. On March, in March of 2024, the ALUC adopted the airport land use compatibility plan with the fifty percent inflated noise contours and expanded airport, airport influence area against the objections of the city. So the city's main concerns with the noise contours and the airport influence area in the airport land, land use compatibility plan are foremost that the ALUC did not follow the Public Utilities Code, which says that the airport land use compatibility plan and the AIA should be based on the airport master plan. The ALUC assumed of an unsubstantiated fifty percent increase in airport aircraft operations when calculating the noise contours for the airport. These inflated noise contours were then utilized to create an expanded airport influence area in San Jose. This expanded AIA would add an additional 240 acres of land to the airport influence area in San Jose. If the ALUC adopted airport influence area were utilized by the city, these additional 240 acres would now need to be referred to the ALUC for determination of consistency with the airport land use compatibility plan for general plan amendments, rezonings, and municipal and building code updates. This referral process can add several months to the timeline of a project and is also me, is extra cost for both privately and city initiated projects. For reference, the map above depicts the prior airport influence area in green, the recently adopted ALUC, AIA in red, and the proposed modified- recently adopted ALUC, AIA in red, and the proposed modified AIA by the city in blue. It can be a little challenging to see because they do overlap a little. You can see that the AIA did shrink on the west and northern boundaries because of quieter aircraft and the removal of a runway. But the AIA has expanded in the southern boundary in San Jose. The city is not disputing the changes to the north and west, only the changes in the south in San Jose. For reference, these two maps depict the area where there is a difference between the ALUC adopted airport influence area and the proposed modified airport influence area. One area includes parts of downtown and parts of the area that are included in the DeRidon Station area plan, and the other area is south of downtown and includes residential and industrial uses. This general plan text amendment proposes a modified airport influence area, which would be represented in the general plan and the DeRidon Station area plan with updated maps. Additionally, to provide consistency and clarity, the text changes will use consistent naming conventions for the airports, update the language to differentiate the ALUC adopted AIA from the city-approved modified AIA, as well as adding a section that provides background and justification for the modified airport influence area. If the general plan text amendment and overrule are approved by City Council, the City of San Jose will utilize the modified airport influence area to determine which projects will be referred to the ALUC for consistency determination with the Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan, not the ALUC adopted airport influence area. Thank you for your time, and we are available for questions.
Thank you. Do we have any members of the public who would like to speak on this item? All right, not seeing anyone move forward, so we will turn it over to the commission for discussion. First up, we have Commissioner Lardinois.
Thank you. So, just basic question about this, because I'm not super familiar with this policy area. Are there any issues with the city overruling the plan that was adopted by the Airport Land Use Commission? Or is that just normal part of the process?
We are requesting to overrule only the map section, the AIA. We have done this in the past for a few other projects. The city has, and we've made findings in the resolution as to why we want, we feel that we should do that.
Okay. And so, the city just has the authority to do that? There's no, like, legal disputes that would follow?
We do have the authority under the California statute, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We'll go over to Commissioner Oliverio.
Hi. Could you please go one slide back? So, on the differentiation between the red line and the blue line, is that going to affect what can be constructed there in the future?
You mean the expanded area, right?
Whatever the area of difference is, well, does it affect what may go there in the future as far as height?
Yeah, so it would, what would happen is that if a project wants to build on those sites, it is subject to land use and zoning, and we would have to refer it to the Airport Land Use Commission. They would likely be required in aviation easement, maybe I'm not, yeah, aviation easement. But I think those, the height limits extend above what the zoning code already allows. So, there wouldn't really be an impact in terms of height. John, do you want to add something?
So, this proposed overrule would not have any impact on heights in this area. So, this is merely just the boundary for which projects have to go to the ALUC. Federal regulations still apply outside of what we're talking about here, state of California regulations.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner Bigford?
Do we know why they wanted to extend into this area? I mean, was there a purpose documented? Did you have a conversation with them about it?
We did meet with them on half a dozen occasions, and the main reason is the larger the area, the more power the ALUC has, the more projects that have the potential to go. In this case, it's specific criteria, rezonings, general plan amendments, specific plans. We have to refer our Airport Master Plan amendments to the ALUC. So, the larger the area, the more projects that fall in that area that would have to comply with ALUC policies and/or potentially be referred to the ALUC.
Not seeing anyone else in the speaker queue. Commissioner Lardinois?
Sure, two things. One, I want to ask Commissioner Oliverio if he brought enough to share. And then, I want to move to adopt the staff recommendation.
All right, we have a motion to approve the staff recommendation from Commissioner Lardinois with a second from Commissioner Oliverio. I'm not seeing any other hands for discussion, so we will move on to a vote. Vice Chair Cantrell is absent. Commissioner Barocchio?
Yes.
Commissioner Bondal?
Yes.
Commissioner Bigford?
Yes.
Commissioner Lardinois?
Yes.
Commissioner Oliverio?
Yes.
Commissioner Rosario?
Yes.
Commissioner Young is absent. Myself, yes. That's seven yes, zero no, two absent, so the motion passes. All right, we will now move on to tonight's public hearing. We have one item on the agenda for tonight's hearing, which is CP twenty-one dash zero two-two and ER twenty-one dash two-eight-zero, which is a conditional use permit to allow the demolition of three single-story buildings within an existing shopping center, for the construction of an approximately one hundred and sixty-five thousand square foot Costco retail building, an application for off-sale alcohol with a determination of public convenience or necessity, and a request for extended construction hours. Before we move to the staff presentation for this project, I wanted to note that, given the number of public speakers that we have this evening for this item, we will be limiting public comment to one minute per speaker. Staff, do we have a presentation?
Yes, I do. Looks like someone's still sharing their screen. Can I share screen? All right, thank you. All right. All right. Evening Commissioners, members of the public. My name is Alakat Tienza, and I am Planning Project Manager on the Development Review Team with the City's Planning Division. I'm joined by my colleague Kara Hawkins from the Environmental Team. We also got a couple other folks from the Environmental Team and Public Works here tonight as well to answer any questions. So, the item before you is five A. That's the Westgate West Costco project, file number CP twenty-one dash zero two-two. Just for some context, the subject site is located at the intersection of Lawrence Expressway and Prospect Road. It's the existing Westgate West Shopping Center. This project is surrounded by single-family residences to the north across Graves Avenue, medical offices, and a shopping center. That's the West Valley Shopping Center you see on your screen to the east. Commercial uses across Prospect Road to the south. You can see in a corner, there's Prospect High School to the southwest across the intersection, and then across Lawrence Expressway there, you have some multifamily residential. So, in terms of the existing general plan and zoning, this site currently has a general plan land use designation of neighborhood community commercial. The zoning district is CG Commercial General. It should be noted, this site is located in the Paseo de Saratoga Urban Village, which does not yet have an approved urban village plan. So, in terms of the project itself, this project will allow the demolition of three existing buildings within the shopping center. That's about one hundred and eighty-eight thousand square feet of existing commercial. Remove one hundred and fifteen trees of those. Seventy-three would be ordinance size, forty-two would be non-ordinance size, and Costco proposes one hundred and ninety-eight trees for replacement. As for the Costco building itself, it includes the construction of a one hundred and sixty-five thousand one hundred and forty-eight square foot building, as well as associated public improvements, including some changes to the drive aisles, reorienting the parking lots, rooftop parking, tire sales, and seasonal outdoor sales as well. This project application also includes a conditional use permit and a determination of public convenience or necessity, and that's for off-sale alcohol in conjunction with a type twenty-one California ABC license. And then, lastly, this project proposes extended construction hours. So, standard construction hour times are seven AM to seven PM, Monday through Friday. This project proposes eight AM to five PM on Saturdays, as well as five twenty-four hour concrete pours. So, with regards to project review, this project was reviewed for conformance with the envisioned San Jose 2040 general plan, San Jose Municipal Code specifically for tree removals, as well as zoning code. The citywide design standards and guidelines applied for this project. Oops, sorry, one point on the zoning code. This project came in in November of 2021, so it's actually subject to the old parking code that was in existence prior to April tenth, 2023. So, one note there. Project was subject to the citywide design standards and guidelines, City Council Policy six dash thirty for public outreach, as well as the California Environmental Quality Act, commonly known as SEQA. For that, I'm going to kick it over to Kara Hawkins. She's going to discuss SEQA.
Good evening, Commissioners. As Alex said, my name is Kara Hawkins, and I am the Environmental Planner for this project. I'm going to quickly go over the environmental review that was done for this project. So, back in January 2022 to February 2022 is when we noticed the notice of preparation, commonly referred to the NOP. And it was during this time, on January twenty-fourth, that we held the environmental scoping meeting, which is basically our, our point of getting feedback from the community to see what they would also like studied in this document. And then, fast forward to December 2023, we released the draft EIR for public circulation. That actually ran through February twentieth, 2024. Our standard public circulation timeline is typically forty-five days for an EIR. However, this did coincide with the holiday season, and we did want to be mindful to give the community members ample time to review, so that public circulation comment period was actually extended to around sixty days. And then, finally, we released the final environmental impact report back on September thirteenth, 2024. And just to clarify, the final EIR isn't actually a new EIR document. What that consists of is the First Amendment, and the First Amendment is the document where we have addressed the community's concerns from the public comment period. So, those are all the responses to comments, including the, any minor text edits that we did make to that draft EIR. And then, that final EIR also encompasses that original draft EIR document and the MMRP, which is the mitigation and monitoring reporting program, which outlines the conditions that the applicant is required to comply with as they move forward in their development proposal. So, just to preface, the EIR itself, it did not identify any significant and unavoidable impacts. So, all impacts that were identified were able to be reduced to less than significant with implementation of certain mitigation measures. Those mitigation measures that were required to reduce impacts pertain to air quality, specifically during construction activities, nesting birds, hazards and hazardous materials from past uses on the site, and construction-related noise. As part of the EIR, we also included alternatives. These are usually incorporated in order to show alternatives that are there to limit certain impacts to less than significant. For this project, all impacts were able to be reduced to less than significant with the mitigation measures. However, we still provided alternatives. So, for this project, we had a no-project alternative, which would keep the site as-is, an alternative placement on-site, so reorienting the existing proposal, a reduced-size alternative, and then, an alternative that has the rooftop parking removed. So, our initial analysis showed that the no-project alternative was the environmentally superior alternative. However, under SEQA, we are required to identify one of those alternatives that is not the no-project. So, it was actually the alternative placement-on-site alternative that would be the environmentally superior option. This is specifically because it would reduce the noise and vibration impact for residents located to the east of the project site. This alternative, however, didn't fully realize the project objectives and would result in similar impacts for the other resource areas. And then, briefly speaking about some of the EIR comment letters that we received during public circulation, we did receive a high volume of public correspondence. In total, the city received three hundred and eighty-seven written comment letters during the sixty-day public circulation period. They raised a variety of concerns, but the predominant concerns that were raised include site access and circulation, specifically through one of the Graves Avenue access points, safety of pedestrians and bicyclists in the area, including school students, traffic and parking, and then perceived incompatibility with the urban village goals that Alex briefly spoke about the, the project being in, and then alcohol sales, and also air quality and hazardous material concerns. These aren't all of the concerns, but these were the, kind of the ones that came up the most frequently. We did address all of these comments in our First Amendment. None of the comments identified substantive inadequacies of the draft EIR that would necessitate recirculation.
So, with that, staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend to City Council that they adopt a resolution certifying the EIR and adopt a resolution approving a conditional use permit and determination of public convenience or necessity. So, with that, that concludes staff presentation. I know the applicant is here as well.
Thank you, staff. At this time, we'll have five minutes for a presentation from the project applicant.
I want to first thank you for allowing us to present our proposed Costco at the Westgate West Mall tonight. My name is Michael Kuma. I'm the Real Estate Development AVP for Costco Wholesale. As you know, San Jose has been home for us for over thirty years with five warehouses in the city. We have strong roots in the community, and our membership has grown along with the success of San Jose. For years, our members have been asking for a new warehouse in West San Jose. We're excited to have found a site here at Westgate West Mall. This location will better serve our membership and help reduce overall traffic. We are bringing about two hundred and fifty to three hundred new jobs to the community, paying an average wage of about twenty-nine dollars an hour. The city's own Office of Economic Development estimates two million dollars in annual taxes will be generated from a typical big box like us. Working with our landlord, First Washington, represented by Greg Zeig, who is here with me tonight, we will be revitalizing this existing mall. We have listened to our neighbors' concerns and have made many changes in response to making this a better project. So, let me now turn the presentation over to Lynette Diaz from Urban Planning Partners.
Thank you. Our presentation this evening focuses on our stakeholder engagement and what we've heard and what we've changed in response to community concerns. And these are independent of any of the impacts or mitigation measures identified in the EIR. We have participated in over thirty-five meetings over the last three years, including meetings with neighbors, high school parents, the high school district, the medical office building owners, and shopping center tenants. One of the greatest concerns raised relates to trucks on Graves Avenue. One of the greatest concerns raised relates to trucks on Graves Avenue, and the desire of some for there to be no access to and from Graves. We worked closely with our team and landlords on this issue, and have committed to close one of the two driveways, close the existing pedestrian access, and Costco trucks not using Graves Avenue at all. This results in a net reduction of trucks on Graves Avenue from an average of 17 trucks per day to six trucks per day from existing conditions from 1922. I'm sorry, 2022, why? I'm going way back in time. It is not an option to close Graves off completely. These access points have been there for over 50 years, and the owner and existing tenants have legal access rights to Graves Avenue. To address noise concerns along Graves, we added a six-foot sound wall and shifted the building, the back of the building, to align with that wall. And if you can see the blue and purple line along Graves, that will now form a continuous barrier to the eastern driveway. The shift also accommodates preserving most of the trees along Graves. At the loading dock, we added a roof and an exterior wall to further address noise concerns. I also want to highlight that the project will eliminate 10 loading access points along the existing buildings that parallel Graves Avenue. In association with rooftop parking, some have raised concerns about privacy and light pollution. In response, we increased the parapet wall height to six feet. We reduced light pole height, and we shifted them away further from the parapet wall, and also met very conservative dark-skies standards. And here, pedestrian safety, we've looked at improvements on Lawrence Expressway frontage, and as well as, which were committed to the driveway, as well as improvements all along the frontage, including landscaping and sidewalk. And we also worked with city staff and the county on off-site improvements. This is just a summary of the concerns, and we've made over a dozen changes to address those concerns. And that is just a quick overview. And I went too far. And then finally, just the project benefits. Aliving an existing shopping center, reducing truck traffic on Graves, eliminating the existing loading access points, pedestrian and bicycle safety, and the revenue to the city and the economic job growth. And with that concludes our presentation, and our team, both the property owner and Costco's consultants are all here and available to answer questions.
Thank you. Before we move on to public comment, I wanted to pause here to provide an opportunity for any members of the commission to disclose ex parte communications related to this project.
Yeah, I met with Costco's team yesterday, and then also, over the past three years, I've met many times with residents who expressed concerns about the project.
Thank you. Any other communications to disclose?
Yes, I met with Costco's team yesterday.
Thank you. All right, with that, we will move to public comment. As a reminder, each speaker will have one minute. I have a stack of speaker cards here that I will get started with. If you would like to speak on this item and you have not already submitted a card, please do so at this time and put them in one of the boxes at the front of the chamber. I'll call a couple names at a time, so you can come down to the front of the chamber, line up behind the podium, and then, you know, we'll go in batches from there. All right? Yes. Oh, yes, and the speaking time is one minute. All right, we will get started with Julie Reynolds Grabby, Sarah Ludwig, Austin, no last name, and Becky, no last name. And if you could just state your name for the record, and then you'll have one minute, and the mic will automatically turn off.
Greetings. My name is Julie Reynolds Grabby. I'm a longtime San Jose resident, community leader, and current president of the Prospect High School PTSA. I'm here tonight as a member of both Save West Valley and PTSA to urge you to vote no on the warehouse proposal. We follow this project since 2021 and believe it's unsafe for our students and community. The location is inappropriate. It's less than 50 feet from long-established homes, close to several parks, across from assisted living centers, 1,000 feet from a high school, thousands of feet from an elementary school, and it will bring 20, excuse me, 4 million extra car trips per year to an area already plagued by congestion and frequent injury accidents. It's also larger than a normal Costco on a site that's one-third smaller, and it doesn't have enough parking, and it doesn't fit the land use designation. Our sea of green tonight will have a litany of our concerns.
And I'm sorry, if we could please limit any sound from the audience in between speakers, just in the entrance, being able to get through everyone here tonight. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sarah Ludwig. As a member of Save West Valley, I am concerned that bringing a huge warehouse store with approximately 11,000 car trips a day across the street from a high school, with students who access the roads in the area to get to or from school, is simply many accidents waiting to happen. Additionally, accessing the Costco site via Graves Avenue directly into the Country Lane neighborhood will add to safety challenges near Country Lane Elementary. As a parent of four children who have attended Country Lane and who have or will attend Prospect, I'm asking you to think about the safety of students above all else. At the February 5th, 2024 Costco meeting seven months ago, a council member noted that the area is quite complicated with problems that need to be solved, but that it will take time. To date, no changes of consequence for this project have been recommended or agreed upon that will help to ensure the safety for the myriad of students that will be directly impacted. Growth and change are needed, but this is not the right project for this.
Chair Tordeo, can we highlight that there's a timer that they can reference? And I don't know if we can get the Zoom timer up on the screen for the benefit of the speakers.
Yeah, is staff able to help with that?
We can, but that wouldn't mean the public would be seeing the timer the entire time. So, okay, just making sure. Well, we can coordinate with timer if you want it.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Austin, and I am a senior at Prospect High School, a cross-country athlete, a cyclist, a pedestrian, a driver, and in three weeks, I will be a voter. My biggest concern is the already dangerous levels of traffic at the intersections of Prospect and Lyle, Prospect and Lawrence, and Prospect in Saratoga. Combining drivers who aren't paying attention while they frantically search for limited parking with students who are distracted in an already known to be dangerously congested area is the opposite of safe. I am worried for the well-being of my fellow classmates, that they will be severely injured or even killed by this unnecessary and preventable addition of a Costco warehouse in an already crowded neighborhood of schools and homes. Commissioners, I urge you to vote no on this warehouse proposal. Please care enough to make our collective future safer. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next speakers will be Ben, no last name provided, Michael Wright, Jennifer, no last name, and Tammy Cook, so you can also come down to the podium. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Becky, and my two kids bike through the proposed site on their commutes to and from Prospect High School. Despite the city conducting an additional traffic assessment, it did not cover school dismissal. School is dismissed at 2:50 PM, and the additional assessment conducted began 15 minutes after peak traffic times. A friend of mine is a Costco employee in another state. I showed them the proposed Costco site at school dismissal time, and they were convinced that without a pedestrian bridge, students would die if this project was completed. I understand this is a layperson's opinion, but given the city's assessment was not conducted during the proper time, I think that the opinion of someone who spends 30 hours a week in a Costco parking lot is an input that you should consider. Again, traffic has not been assessed, and it would be negligent to approve the Costco.
Chair, if I may, the timer that's being shown is only, is showing two minutes rather than one. So, oh, okay, thank you.
Hello, I'm Ben. I'm a senior at Prospect High School, and have walked and driven, as well as run cross-country at Prospect. Many of my peers have been concerned about the changes that will negatively affect us as students if Costco were to go in. However, we feel that no one will listen to our safety concerns. So far, this is true. It doesn't matter how well you follow rules and laws. With increased cars, more accidents will happen. As a pedestrian myself, I have narrowly been hit, even with following safety precautions. I've also been told that four kids have been hit in the past year in the area. If you watch the video sent, you will see how chaotic it is at a mere intersection, not even considering the dozens of students that will cross at other times and nearby locations. Please don't be afraid to do what is right and vote no on this project. We ask you to advocate for a more community-friendly project that will better protect us, the students. Our safety and well-being need to be more important than profit. Please vote no. Thank you.
My name is Michael Wright, a San Jose native, former president of Eastern Brook Neighborhood Association, AdVid Trader Joe's customer, and a parent of two future Prospect High School students. As a parent, I am extremely concerned that the city of San Jose would allow a Costco warehouse to be constructed so close to a school where the student traffic would be endangered. Students from neighborhoods in the West San Jose area need to cross the dangerous intersection at Prospect and Lawrence throughout the day, where traffic is heavy in both directions of travel. Adding 11,000 car trips to this already heavily impacted intersection is a recipe for potential fatalities. I have been told that Costco plans to repair and widen the sidewalks adjacent to the project, which will do nothing to mitigate this concern. I'm also concerned about the longevity at Trader Joe's at this location. I strongly urge a no vote on this proposal. Thank you very much.
My name is Jennifer. I've been a resident of the Country Lane neighborhood for most of my life. Less than a year ago, the city of San Jose converted one of the car lanes into a bike lane to make our area safer for pedestrians and bicyclists. But now there's a plan to add a Costco in the same area. How does that, how does that make sense? How many walkers and bikers do you think will be going to Costco to shop for items there that are in bulk? This location cannot handle the additional traffic that a Costco would add. As a former Prospect High School student, traffic was bad before, and, but it will be unimaginably unsafe for students with a Costco added to the intersection. I have dealt with this terrible traffic myself, and I have seen many close calls with students walking through the lot to get home from school. It makes no sense to say that you care about the safety of pedestrians and bicyclists with the bike lanes, but then ignore the safety of the students and residents of the community that will be affected if you allow this Costco development to proceed. Commissioners, please vote no on this Costco.
Thank you. And our next speakers will be Pat Stemsky, Doris L. Ramesh, no last name provided, and Ron, no last name.
Hi, I'm Tammy Cook, concerned parent of a future Prospect High Schooler. This Costco does not align with the San Jose city plan in three areas. First, Vision Zero. Costco will sit right across from Prospect High School across a very busy intersection. Commissioners, on Monday, I sent you a video of students crossing this intersection. Adding 11,000 more car trips a day into the mix makes it even more dangerous. It's foreseeable there will be severe injuries or fatalities, and no Costco is worth this. Next, climate smart San Jose, becoming carbon neutral by 2030. Costco fails us. It will use natural gas. Lastly, Costco is not compatible with an urban village. In closing, new developments should adhere to the city's plans. Costco does not. And, most importantly, it puts our students in danger. I urge you to vote no. Thank you.
My name is Doris Libsy. I'm president of the Murdoch Neighborhood Association and a member of Save West Valley. I'll start by saying I am a Costco member. I love Costco, but not in the neighborhood, not in any neighborhood. Homes shouldn't be around a store like that with that kind of parking and traffic. The neighbors around the proposed Costco are not happy. The store will be 20% larger with fewer parking spaces than the Sunnyvale Costco, and you know what the traffic up there is like, and it's a separate standalone store, not in a residential neighborhood. The traffic for our neighborhood and high school will be disastrous. Please do not approve the plan in its present form. The nearby El Paso developer has already started to change what the planning staff and the city council approved. I'm sure we'll get the same from the Costco developer, since the Napa Costco has already requested additional parking spaces, and they won't open until October. Thank you.
My name is Ramesh. I'm here to speak on the land use and zoning issue related to this project. The proposed Costco development is in a neighborhood shopping center. We all know what kind of businesses are typically there, like grocery stores, small retail, restaurants, drugstores, et cetera. People can walk and bike to these places. Costco is a wholesale warehouse center that is selling bulk goods. It is car-centric. It does not lend itself to walking, cycling, or transit. It draws customers from all over the region. Neighborhood shopping centers aren't meant for serving regional needs. A warehouse retail center is not allowed by land use rules in the neighborhood shopping center. None of the existing Costcos in San Jose are in neighborhood shopping centers. They are in regional, commercial, or light industrial areas. Please do not make an exception. The goal of general plan is to build a city of great places, so please stick to it. Please do not turn San Jose into a city of warehouses. I strongly urge the planning commission to reject the proposal due to...
All right, and the next speakers that we will have will be Pat Stemsky, Connie Tietze, Robert Mosher, Kim, no last name, and Gary Smith.
My honor, good evening. My name is Ron Tietze. It doesn't take a traffic study to see that Costco at this crossroads location, adding 11,000 vehicle trips a day, 358 days a year, with its typical traffic backups in and out of its parking lot, will decimate any flow of traffic through this area. These conditions will lead to cut-through traffic through nearby neighborhoods right by elementary and middle schools. Costco is encouraging this cut-through traffic and creating major safety concerns by planning a primary entrance on Graves Avenue and advertising this entrance with a huge Costco sign. The new Vision Zero Road Island, Saratoga Avenue, has increased cut-through traffic in the neighborhood. Any post-construction traffic studies would be too late. We already know, like water, vehicles will travel the least path of resistance through the neighbor, through the neighborhood. Just say no to Costco at Westgate West. If it comes to mitigation, we implore you to require no access from Graves Avenue. Use a wall along the street and between Costco and the medical center to contain shopping carts and protect all residences, businesses, and...
Thank you.
My name is Connie Tietze. Nothing about the proposed Costco is minimal, except for the size of the land it's on and its parking. Every Costco member knows that the best find at Costco is a parking spot. Unfortunately, this project just doesn't have enough. Compare this project to the Sunnyvale Costco and the Napa Costco opening next month. Both of those are smaller warehouses on much larger lots and have more parking spaces than this one. And not just a few more spots, 150 to almost 300 more. Plus, there is no protected parking for other businesses in the shopping center. They will lose customers due to the lack of parking. Other area Costco warehouses are in light industrial areas, yet they still all have traffic, parking, and circulation issues. Why then would the city even consider allowing a Costco warehouse?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Robert Mosher. I am a Costco member. However, this proposed location is fundamentally unsuitable for a Costco store. The lot is inadequate in size, and the existing traffic conditions are already... The lot is inadequate in size, and the existing traffic conditions are already challenging. Costco portrays itself as a good neighbor, but their actions in this proposal contradict this claim. A good neighbor would not propose a massive commercial development in an undersized lot relying on surrounding businesses and residential areas to absorb the overflow parking. A good neighbor would implement preventative measures, like cart locks, to keep their equipment within property boundaries. I frequently shop at the Costco in Gilroy, which is properly located across the freeway and away from residential areas. The carts still wind up in surrounding areas. We've been informed that the city lacks the authority to enforce any commitments Costco might make. This raises a critical question. If you approve this project, what message are you sending to the West Valley community? Approving this proposal would signal our community concerns are secondary to corporate interests and that the city is powerless to ensure responsible corporate behavior.
Hello, my name is Kim Jackson, and I don't think there is one person in this room that would want to live 50 feet from Costco's door. I am especially concerned about the cumulative health issues that Costco will have on all the residents. I live on the corner of Cameo and Graves Avenue, and it's 50 feet from the proposed site. We call it Ground Zero. The operations of HVAC equipment, transformers, trash compactors, forklifts, and the continuous daily operations just 50 feet away from the residents on Graves Avenue will further risk the serious health issues for the resident in this community. When present and future residents note degradation of their health, who will be responsible? Will it be the city, the Costco, or the developer? It is the obligation of the city to examine and consider and propose a comprehensive plan that addresses these critically important issues before moving forward with this plan. The question-
Thank you. Our next speakers will be Roberta, no last name. Thank you. Steph, could we just make sure that the timing is accurate for the mic auto-turnoff? Thank you.
Yeah, they're run by two different people. It's hard. They're going, the mic's gonna be on when they start. That might lag a little bit, but yeah.
I see. Thank you. Thank you. Our next speakers will be Roberta, Eileen Genko, Craig, no last name, Kurt Ma, and Mark Barbaris.
Hello, planning commissioners. I'm Gary Smith. I was announced in the prior set. I'm here to confirm what I brought up two weeks ago about the sky glow. And not only that, but at tonight meeting, at tonight meeting, I want you to know that the Costco's Title 24 documentation, if it goes through the way it's presented on page 58 of the Archmoor Street, it will be a breaking of the law, because they do not show 96 to 98 luminaire fixtures that will be on the rooftop parking lot. That will be a breaking of the law if it goes through, but signed by the city and is installed. Also, they did not disclose that those 96 and 98 fixtures are less than 24 feet tall. If you look at the Title 24 documentation that you can look at on page 58 of 62 of the most recent architectural plan set, they do not disclose that 96 to 98 of their fixtures are less than 24 feet tall. That's a breaking of the law, too. Those are two major considerations. I urge you-
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Roberta Witty, and I am a member of Save West Valley, and I live across Lawrence Expressway from the proposed Costco at Westgate. Back when Osh was there, I could clearly hear the PA system announcing from the garden shop. Therefore, any noise that originates at Westgate Mall will travel toward me and the acute-care assisted living facility next door to my home. The air-wrench sounds from the tire store are very concerning. I don't want to be forced to listen to the whirring and whizzing of those air-wrench noises all day long. In addition to the sensitive receptors next door to me in the dementia wing of the nursing home will also be subject to these sounds all day long. The nerve rattling noise from the tire store and the daily operations on the east end will affect all of those who live in this area. On behalf of all seniors-
Hello, my name is Eileen Gurkey, and I live a few blocks from the planned Costco site. A Smart and Final discount supermarket that served our community was forced to close and then was left vacant by the landlord. We understand the commission considers Costco as a similar or in-kind replacement. Nothing could be further from the truth. Costco and Smart and Final are in no way equivalent. The proposed Costco warehouse will be six times the size of the now-vacant Smart and Final, and the traffic it will bring will overwhelm an already over-congested area. Unlike Smart and Final, which was open to everyone, Costco is a membership-only store, which excludes many lower-income residents and others who don't have the budget, storage space, or need for big bulk items. Costco will limit choices and harm local businesses that cannot compete with its scale. We urge, we need a store that serves everyone. I urge you to vote no on the proposal. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kurt Ma, and I'm a neighborhood resident and parent. I'd like to address the topic of alcohol sales in the Costco proposal. Costco sells about $5 billion of alcohol annually. This includes beer, wine, and liquor. The California Alcohol Beverage Control Act would need to grant an off-sale license to Costco to sell alcohol. We feel that a license should not be granted to Cisco, or Costco. Why? There are already seven alcohol-to-go licenses in the immediate area, which is less than a square mile. This includes Bevmo, a huge alcohol superstar that is only 500 feet from the Costco site. The area currently has double the amount of licenses that are allowed by state law. Since the area is already saturated with licenses, the planning commission would need to grant an exception, and exceptions are only allowed for public necessity or convenience. Clearly, this is not the case, since there are already seven alcohol stores in the area. Planning commissioners, the area is over-concentrated with alcohol licenses. Please deny Costco's request to issue an exception for an off-sale alcohol license.
Hello, I'm Dongling Ding and a member of the West, Save West Valley. I live about 200 feet away from the side on the Cameo Drive. If this commission decides to approve the proposal, I urge you to make the following mitigation to the project. Number one, completely close off all the traffics to Costco from Graves Avenue to eliminate the cuts-through, the traffic around the country land and the inventory and the nearby streets. Second, implement the noise-control measures during the construction and the daily operation to prevent disturbance to the neighbors and the vulnerable groups. Having a roof over the loading dock will not stop the beeping from the phone lifts and the noise from the delivery and trash trucks. Third, add solo panels on the roof. Costco can afford it and should contribute to offset energy pollution from the business, and it re-
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Craig. I'm going to address two Costco petition request claims. The first is ensuring its operations will not impact surrounding businesses. The site has been kept vacant by the REIT company, which has removed existing businesses by raising rents, for example, Barbecue and Dolce Bella Chocolate Cafe. Costco will serve another, Costco will serve as an anchor location attracting hundreds of new customers to patronize existing small businesses and booster the city's retail base and tax revenue. Existing retailers are being displaced, so claiming existing businesses will attract more customers is not completely accurate. Potential customers are turned off by traffic, parking, and chaotic conditions. Those-
Thank you. The next set of speakers we'll have is Adam, no last name, Mark Polliger, Susan, no last name, Michelle Vennard, and Mark Knopf. So you can all come down to the podium at this time. Thank you.
My timer is counting down to 53 already. All right, thank you.
Restart the timer. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mark Barbaris. I'm going to invite you into Costco's boardroom for a little conversation. Wow, 387 comment letters. Mike, are we in trouble? You're new here, John. Just stick with the plan and we'll be fine. But I mean, we have no plan for those kids from the high school, for people on Graves Avenue, for people opposite the tire shop, for traffic, and the site is too small for what we want to build. How are we gonna win? Well, that's when Sequo comes in handy. We just do Sequo, tell the city it's good for their budget, and we'll win. But the city knows that purchases at our store come at the expense of local businesses that may have to close. Trust me, John, we just stick with Sequo, make zero concession. You know Costco's game plan. You know how to thwart the scheme. I strongly urge you to vote no to Big Money, no to Costco. Thank you very much.
Commissioners, my name is Adam Polliger, and I'm a high school senior. I'm also eligible to vote in the November election. 2024 Harvard study described young voters as more disillusioned about their political engagement than ever. We have questions about whose best interest the government actually serves and whether our vote even makes a difference. For many of us, seeing the process for the Costco warehouse project is our first contact with government in action. If Costco is approved, how sad would it be for us to witness our local government representatives vote to decrease our safety as we walk and drive to school, increase traffic and pollution, ignore the overwhelming community opposition to this project, and give up on your very own visions for what this area could be? Instead, show us that the government can work for the community and can respond to public needs. Please don't give us a reason to be disillusioned. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Mark Polliger, and I'm part of Save West Valley. Commissioners, you've heard many reasons to oppose this project. Dangerous to students, traffic, pollution, and noise that's dangerous to residents and sensitive populations, unnecessary alcohol sales, the list goes on and on. You've heard from hundreds of residents who wrote 1,200 pages of feedback to you, plus nearly 4,700 petition signers, all of whom opposed the project. You've been hearing these reasons from us for three years. Yet the repeated, repeated offers to sit down and discuss possible mitigations, we've been rebuffed every time. And even after three years, three years of asking for the city to be an advocate and solve these issues, the project is still unsafe and is still inappropriate. In short, it's not a good idea. We welcome growth, but it needs to be reasonable, and it needs to support and fit the community, and Costco does neither. We call on the city to protect our students, protect our neighbors, and not build warehouses, but great places instead. We remain ready to sit down and talk with-
Hello, my name is Susan Kaufman. My family has owned a home on Green Drive, a few doors down from the proposed Costco for the last 64 years. I remember playing on the proposed project site when it was an orchard. I also, I've spent my entire career as a county and a city land use planner, and I am asking you to vote no on this Costco project. It's, I'm pro Costco, but this is the wrong location, and it's the wrong zoning district. Even though Costcos are allowed in the existing zone district, 165,000-square-foot warehouse needs to be in an industrial zone and not immediately adjacent to residential. If you do approve it, please close all traffic.
My name's Murail Knopf. I've been in the area for 41 years. Good evening. I only have a couple of things to say. If you vote yes, that tells me that you have not studied this project. You have not been in the area to look at the area and understand the people in there and the problems that you are going to allow. The other thing is, we do not need a warehouse in a residential area. And lastly, I am willing to take the 20 minutes to drive to the other two Costcos within the area. Painfully, I know, 20 minutes, that's all it takes to get to the other two Costcos. Oh, and by the way, their traffic problems are just as bad as what you're about to commit with a yes vote. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Our next set of speakers will be Ramesh B., Martin Balkovich, Murthy Ramali, and another Ramesh B., but only one comment per person if that was an accidental or incidental.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Michelle Vennard, and I'm gonna say something pretty different. I am a supporter of the project, not to dismiss anything that I've heard here this evening. I am the owner of Bikram Yoga San Jose. I have owned the studio for 22 years. I have been in the Westgate West Shopping Mall for all those years on purpose. It's a great location. Nine years at 5289A, eight years at 5289, taking over the California Fencing Academy, and then another five years where I am now, which is, was the Dolce Bella and the Genius Kids. This location, the last five years, Orchard Supply going down started. Once that closed, it started the diminishment. We used to have about 200 new people that would come to the studio. Now, there's probably about 50 a month, 200 a month versus 50 a month. My studio, just to give you an idea, over the 20 years, had about a-
Thank you.
My family lives on Graves Avenue, the street behind Costco. Before you approve the Costco project, please enforce these three changes. Number one, honor prior city commitment to close Graves Avenue. Mike Endreby from the, from, from the planning department manager previously made this comment in a commitment in an email to me. Number two, Costco operating hours should be limited. No operation should be allowed between 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM. This includes receiving and deliveries. Number three, require Costco to build a wall along their property line along Graves Avenue and adjacent to the medical center, and the medical center can then finish off the wall to the connecting townhomes. I want to address some fud from Costco regarding other stores that use this driveway. Sprouts' site gave up their rights to use those driveways as part of their site development permit. Trader Joe's has committed to and already is using Saratoga Avenue for their trucks. Commissioner Michael, thank you for your email stating that you're gonna take my concerns seriously. Please review the Costco plan as-
Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Mortin Amali, and I'm a resident of Cameo and Graves, practically at the entrance to this Costco. I feel like Lewis and Clark here. I am actually in support of this project, and I'm hoping that you would actually vote for this proposal. Folks, our planet is adding 1 billion people every 10 to 12 years. Just think about it. 1 billion people every 10 to 12 years. And all these people have needs. They need schools, they need colleges, they need roads, and they even need stores. Some of that has to trickle into our area. And satisfying these needs is what growth is, and that growth comes with consequences, either traffic, on one hand, or skyrocketing property values. So, we've seen the benefits, we've seen the challenges. My request for you is to please go ahead and work for this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. That is all of the speaker cards I have for this item. If there's anyone else in the chamber who would like to provide comment on this item, who has not already spoken, please come down to the podium at this time. All right, I'm not seeing anyone move forward, so with that, we will conclude public comment and provide another five minutes to the project applicant. Alright, I'm not seeing anyone move forward, so with that, we will conclude public comment and provide another five minutes to the project applicant.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Eric Phillips. I'm a land use partner at Burke Williamson Sorensen, representing Costco, and want to thank staff for their thorough presentation. Thank you for your attention to all the public comments and to our comments tonight, and thank the public speakers for sharing their thoughts as well. We've been listening throughout the process, and as Lynette highlighted in her initial presentation, many changes to the project have already been incorporated to address a lot of these concerns. One thing I wanted to highlight quickly for the commission here is that the location is zoned a general commercial use. It has long been a commercial center. Over fifty years, it's been operating as a commercial center next to residential uses near the high school. Costco is consistent with this land use and with the city's development standards. So the fact that the city has decided already that this use is acceptable is something that is already part of the city's land use code. The other important factor related to that is that, again, Costco is making changes as it redevelops the site to remove commercial square footage, to increase parking, and to improve operations to limit noise, lighting impacts, and other transportation improvements. These wouldn't happen if the site weren't redeveloped. The site has existing commercial businesses there with loading docks that face the residential uses, that have multiple access points on Graves Avenue. So it's the redevelopment that creates the opportunity for the site improvements and the other enhancements that the Costco project can bring. I'll pause there and ask Lynette to highlight some of the features around parking and cut through traffic as we conclude our comment.
Yeah, related to the cut-through traffic, I just wanna highlight condition of approval number thirty-three. It's a public work conditions of approval. You know, we've heard the concerns around cut-through traffic. The traffic analysis that was completed by the city and in the EIR does not show that being a significant concern, but to be overly cautious, we are committed to taking counts, you know, now and after the store opens, and a year from there. And if there are issues, we've committed to addressing those. On parking, you know, we're reducing the square footage at the site by over twenty-three thousand square feet. And we're adding two hundred and eighty-one additional parking spaces, which exceeds the city's requirement by almost four hundred and fifty spaces. So, the lot is an appropriate size, you know, for a use like this in that we can provide that much additional parking, and we're reducing square footage by that much. The plans for the high school students, you know, we've worked hard on that and feel like, you know, Costco is giving a lot to that. We're giving up to a million dollars, which is fifty percent of the estimated cost for the improvements to the Prospect Lawrence Expressway intersection. It's not gonna solve everything, but again, Costco's traffic, based on the city's traffic studies and the EIR and the technical analysis, is less than five percent of the traffic going through those intersections. Wanna pick up there?
So, thank you. So then, as we conclude, we just want to, again, reiterate those community benefits that Costco is committed to contributing. As Lynette just talked about, Costco is committed to contributing one million dollars towards Lawrence and Prospect intersection improvements. That wasn't really discussed during the comments that we heard from the public, but that is an important part of Costco looking to be part of the solution to the concerns that we're hearing from the community members that are here before you tonight. We've already heard about the economic growth, the two million dollars in annual sales tax that the city projects to receive from a business like this. We also want to emphasize Costco's fair wage policy for both its construction workers and people that work in the store. This is a key part of economic revitalization for the shopping center and the economic health of the area. So we thank you. We have a robust team here. If you have questions or need further information, and we thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. With that, we will turn it over to the commission for a discussion. First up, we have Commissioner Oliverio.
Thank you, Chair. Staff, do we have requirements that on new commercial development that they have solar or a green roof, like a white roof instead of black, something like that?
Yeah, so Al Cattienza, Planning Project Manager. So that's actually not something required at the planning stage. It will be required at the building permit stage. I believe they have the option to either provide it on the rooftop or in the parking area. And I don't know if they have an idea of what they want to do yet, but I do know it is required for any new commercial buildings.
Okay, so just so we can have closure on this item, does someone from Costco want to come up and answer that? How many do you have tonight with you? Do you have five, six? How many Costco employees in the audience? How many? One, two, three. Three, thank you. Hi.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Mike Knopf with MG2. We are the architects for the project. California Building Code in the year that we will be applying for the project or moving forward does require solar on projects. At the time of application, it was not part of the California Building Code. So now that it is, we will be required to include solar on the project. Costco is evaluating options in terms of whether that's on the roof or in the site, and how it will be implemented.
And your criteria for determining that, or I guess that's a Costco decision?
It is a Costco decision. They have a department within Costco that evaluates all the energy needs for their buildings, and they are looking at best solutions and best practices for how to implement that.
Got it. So somewhere in the Costco business unit is a financial planning and analysis person that says, hey, do I think it's better on the garage or the roof?
It's an energy analysis group that focuses specifically on coordination with utilities and energy needs within the building. And they are the ones that we will be working with in order to determine how to implement for the project.
Got it. And you might want to stay here because on this next question. So there was a question on lighting, something illegal, height, this and that. My knowledge of lighting, years, years, years in the back, was the light would spread. But now we have LED lighting that focuses the light down in the central area, much like when we would have lighting on a football field, and the community would come out saying, I don't want light. And then the new technology focuses the light. So, one, was the gentleman who was saying something on pages fifty-eight to sixty-two is something illegal? And B, I'm assuming we're using top technology LED lights to not have the spread?
That's correct. We are using full cutoff fixtures for all of our lights on site. We have limitations to the site lighting specifically on the roof to be ten feet in the latest version of the planning submittal. We've also pulled those lights further away from the northern edge of the rooftop parking so that they, I don't have the exact number off the top of my head, but there's something to the effect of forty-five feet away from the parapet into the parking on the rooftop.
Got it. And let's just pause there. Planning staff, do you concur with what's being said by Costco? Yes?
Yeah, maybe just a couple of things to add on lighting. I mean, so that's mostly done through our citywide design standards. We did review their lighting plan. One just thing I'd like to point out is that it's fairly preliminary at this point because we don't know the exact, say, models that they're gonna be using between now and building permits, but, I mean, as far as this plan goes, yes, they're conforming with our lighting standards.
Got it. And then continuing on. Costco offered to do counts. I assume that was on traffic. Is your intention that it's someone with a clicker? Or is that where you're actually having the Department of Transportation staff conduct a, and you're nodding your head, so I'll let you finish the paragraph. Feel free to.
Yes, it is. Public Works drafted the condition, and so they'll set the standards for how that is done.
Got it. So then, professional planning staff, then at that time, if there's some wide variance, does staff have any ability to make an action?
Yes, this is Manjupan, we're with Department of Public Works. So, we do have a traffic calming policy for residential neighborhoods. It's Council Policy five-dash-six. And so, based on the post-studies, if the traffic volumes and speeds exceed our policy, then we can request that fifty thousand contribution that was mentioned and use it towards traffic calming measures within the neighborhood.
Great. Parking. So had this not been a legacy application and someone applied recently, from what I understand, state of California changed laws that says if you're building next to bus route, which I'm sure this exists here in a high frequency, that there is zero parking required. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So, for the people in the audience, your locally elected state representatives, both in the Assembly and the Senate, voted to eliminate parking from new developments. Okay? What else here? So, a question for you. What's the anticipated cost of construction?
We can get back to you on that in just a few minutes. We need to look.
A few minutes? Okay, that's great. So, but yeah, the reason I ask is because the city is gonna levy two taxes based on the value of your building, the building and structures tax and the CRIMP tax, which go to, for example, paving arterial roads in the surrounding neighborhood and to other things. So that's why I ask.
And also property tax as well.
Oh, I'm not finished. Yeah, yeah. So you'll get back to me on that one, so we'll park that one there. Now, I believe you have to pay a commercial linkage fee for affordable housing. I didn't see that mentioned tonight, and how much is that? I know you have Eric Shane hour in the audience. Do you know what that is, Eric? And you'll come up to the microphone if you're gonna answer. Can't hear you. Gotta come to the microphone.
They're exempt.
What?
They're exempt from commercial linkage fee.
Say it again?
This project is exempt from the commercial linkage fee.
Why is that?
It's a west, I need somebody from housing here. It's a west San Jose urban village, and it's retail, so they don't have to pay anything. They just pay the application.
So, so tell, hang on. So, the commercial linkage fee in San Jose is not citywide? There's exemptions wherever there's an urban village?
There's just exemptions for certain parts of the city.
What are those offhand?
Can we park this one and I'll pull up the?
Yeah, we'll come back, we'll come back.
The answer is it's exempt because certain locations and retail establishments, the city did not want to discourage retail development, because they want the jobs, they want the sales tax.
Got it.
So they exempted those particular uses.
And Eric, you're a Costco shopper?
I'm not a member.
Okay.
No.
So I think what I wanted to come to on this is, A, once we find out what that bill, you have an answer.
Just to respond to your question, it's approximately sixty million dollars for the construction of the site and the building.
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. It's a large investment. As I mentioned, they are gonna pay a fee, a tax on that for that construction, which will go to city uses. It's not, doesn't have the commercial linkage fee. The, as widely heralded in the presentation, that this is anticipated to bring in for the city's share, two million dollars a year in sales tax revenue. The balance of that also gets split with the transit district and other government entities that take the sales tax. Because they're building a new building, there'll be a reassessment of the property tax, so that increases the ongoing annual annuity to Prospect High School, to City of San Jose, to the County of Santa Clara. Because the building is gonna be on, you're gonna pay utility tax. Even if you're using LED lights, you're still gonna use power, and you therefore will be paying an ongoing utility tax. The other item I think that's important is, this has always been in the sort of city's general plan goal to have retail along the borders of the city so that people from other cities could shop in San Jose, because what often happens is San Jose residents have to shop in other cities, Campbell, Milpitas, Santa Clara. So it's always been an objective of the general plan to have that. I just got off a plane tonight, so that's why I was eating here. I was in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania for the International City Managers Association Conference. And lo and behold, what did people talk about? How do I get more retail in my city so I can pay for city services to provide services to my residents? And, you know, if that was a conversation, if this was a case study today at the ICMA event, I know where everyone would be wanting to be in that conference. So, I'm gonna, I'm supporting the project because it meets the city's economic goals, and I don't say that slightly to the residents that came so very well organized tonight, that spoke in such an articulate manner, and were very passionate about your neighborhood. But the issue is, is that the city needs to build an economic base to pay for city employees, to provide city services. We take actions on this dais in a consistent manner to approve thousands of units of low-income housing that pays zero property tax. Zero. We add residents that demand services, but we have no way to pay for them. And the only way to make up for that is when we have a chance where there's a commercial development that brings revenue to the city, we must approve. We must listen to the residents, and we have a process for that, and changes have been made. Never to what the citizens always want. I can tell you, having done this for a while, I've heard people will die so many times near my home when we put in a daycare center that everyone is opposed to because of the traffic, the noise, and everything, and thank the Lord, there's been no accident. But it's just what we see here often. And again, I, you know, two thumbs up for the community. You've, I know people in that audience and who have shirts on, you did a great job. I think you continue to advocate for what you think is right. But at the end of the day, there's a tsunami of general plan and city needs for economic development that this must happen. So I'm strongly supporting the project.
Thank you. Next, we'll go to Commissioners Bickford, followed by Rosario.
Thank you. I have two questions. Not exactly sure which of you can answer them. We were talking about traffic, and I heard several things from the people in the community. I've traveled these, those specific streets quite a lot. I went and looked at the land and envisioned the construction there. I'm having a little trouble in my head between somebody saying this is a huge detriment to these already very busy streets and a potential five percent traffic increase versus, and by the way, I was there when school got out and watched all the kids do all kinds of crazy things that they're not gonna stop doing. And some of the walls that I saw that Costco put up might help that, they might not. My question is, did we, as Commissioner Rosario, sorry, as he asked, do we have any traffic information on traffic flows in this area? Because having a baseline on the traffic flow and an estimate of, yeah, there'll be additional cars that come to park at Costco, but there were cars that parked at the OSH that was there. There are cars that park at the yoga studio. There will be cars. San Jose hopefully is going to continue to increase in both size and residential housing. And what is this really gonna do to that intersection? Can you help me understand and address some of the traffic comments?
All the points you've made about businesses being there before, and then also the point that was made by Commissioner Olivero that, you know, at the edge of the city right now, a lot of people drive through West San Jose to get to the other Costcos. So a lot of that, I'm gonna give you the general answer. If you want a more technical answer, I'm gonna suggest that the city maybe Public Works either answer, or that they have their EIR traffic consultant come up.
I would really like to hear from traffic in this area.
Yes, I can help with the existing volumes. And so, in general, like what we heard today, the project is adding roughly eleven thousand trips. Right? The existing trips from the existing building were roughly six hundred. So, again, there's a net increase of eleven thousand daily trips produced by the project. Along Lawrence Expressway, the projected volumes of average daily traffic with the project are around thirty-seven thousand. Four-to-six lane arterials in general, like our expressway, can handle up to fifty thousand, fifty-five thousand vehicles per day. And so, the. to 50,000, 55,000 vehicles per day. And so the expressway itself is still well within that range. Um, definitely congestion exists out there. Um, it'll continue to exist out there, um, as we develop. Um, but again, um, it's not a sequoia issue, right? We're focused on vehicle miles traveled and how far people are traveling, not necessarily average delay or congestion anymore. Um, because again, we have housing needs, we have other needs that we're, that we're trying to meet in general.
So, so you mentioned vehicle miles traveled and that was another one of my questions. So, just looking at this area and the, the stores that are available, there's a Sprouts down the road, there are other places that people are shopping. Do we think we're going to reduce any vehicle miles traveled for residents in, let's call it a five-mile radius?
Yeah. So with the VMT that we looked at, um, because Costco is unique, right? Um, due to the size, the scope and the membership requirements in general, uh, we worked closely with Kittleson and Associates, uh, the transportation consultant, to determine a methodology to calculate VMT impacts, uh, for the new warehouse. And so we looked at existing member VMT, VMT associated with, um, members shifting from other existing, uh, Costcos. And there were four of them that we looked at, which included Almudin, Coleman, Center and Lawrence, um, that are closest to this project site. Um, and then we looked at VMT from just latent demand. So as, um, you know, this Costco gets occupied, um, there may be less, uh, members at the existing, um, warehouses. So that creates some additional VMT because people will want to travel there more frequently. Um, and then we look at new member VMT and also employment, employment VMT since they're adding 300 jobs to the site. And so as a result of the analysis, um, we, oh, uh, sorry, we also took into consideration some proprietary data, proprietary data, uh, from Costco itself, um, which included, you know, the quantity of visits to the existing Costco warehouses, market areas for current warehouses, and when the new warehouse opens, annual trip frequency before and after, um, the previously new Costco warehouse in, in California open nearby. And so in general, uh, the results of the analysis showed that the VMT would increase due to latent demand and new members and employment, while the VMT from existing members and members shifting from other existing warehouses would decrease. And so we take a look at the total of all those VMTs. Uh, and I'm sorry, I'm getting, my beginning here long-winded, but in general, um, the overall VMT decreases, um, by roughly 2,500 vehicle miles traveled. And so therefore there wasn't any impact.
Thank you. That was the summary I was actually looking for. I have another question. This is related to the size of the building and the placement of the building because I heard in the, uh, in the EIR and the, in the report, um, that the building's size, uh, was, uh, one of the things that the kind people who showed up to have their government in action, um, were, were asking about. Did you, did Costco evaluate different size footprints and, and was there any adjustment made to the size that was being proposed? Or are you at, at the same place you were in 2021?
Uh, the size of the warehouse, oh, sorry. The size of the warehouse is basically driven by prototypical designs, essentially. This is unique in that it's not a prototype. It's, it's, it has parking on the top. So in order to maximize parking on the top, we took advantage of the space underneath. So it is slightly bigger than a normal warehouse by about 12,000 square feet of the warehouses in the market, of the seven market warehouses in this market, five of which are in the City of San Jose. So we took all that into advantage, uh, consideration in developing the warehouse.
And, and I'm curious about the parking on the roof. Was that because you were concerned about parking in the size of the space?
Uh, generally, uh, we wanted to make the most, because this is a, uh, existing site, we wanted to take advantage and take most advantage of the, of the area on the roof. It's about three acres and to try to maximize parking on site.
And do you intend to have delivery from this Costco? Some Costcos do that?
Say again?
Delivery from the Costco.
Deliveries from the Costco?
Mm-hmm. To customers.
To customers.
Some Coscos, some Costcos do that.
Oh, um, no.
No, no, we're not anticipating at this particular location. Uh, we do that in several, in, in certain locations, but in San Jose area in particular, because of the success of the warehouse, we don't want to, uh, encumber the warehouse in, in, in trying to serve its members.
I see. Thank you.
Because it takes, it takes away from the member, uh, experience and, and the efficiency of the warehouse.
Okay. Uh, I just want to say one more thing. For, for all of you that are here tonight, thank you for giving your time, uh, to come and express your opinion. We make better decisions when we have input from the community. Um, so don't think for a minute that we didn't listen to everything that you said. And as Commissioner Oliverio said, this is a, an interesting balance, right? Between making sure that our communities and the people that live here are happy and supported and the fact that the city absolutely needs revenue in order to support the things that our citizens need. Um, so I might not be very popular with all of you, but I'm, I'm going to support, um, this as a community, uh, something that our community needs.
Thank you. Next up, we will go over to Commissioner Rosario, and then I have a few questions for city staff as well.
Um, I may have more questions later, but I just want to, the main thing I wanted to start out with was just, um, seems like after reading volumes of correspondence, um, and of course, thank you all for sending them. Um, it seems like the main two things that were coming up was Graves Avenue, Country Lane Neighborhood, and then the safety at, what, Prospect and Lawrence. Um, from what I understand, I was driving down Graves yesterday, right? There's the cul-de-sac at the end, which allows you to enter through the back. From what I understand, that's going to be closed off. Is that right?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. And then there's also, I think at the intersection of Fields and Graves, there's a walking entrance and that's going to be closed off as well? I guess my question, and this is just broad strokes, I mean, how much can we do to prevent traffic coming through the Country Lane Neighborhood and coming into this shopping center via Graves? And two, how much can we do to increase the safety at the intersection of Prospect and Lawrence Expressway? I mean, in, in theory, right?
Yeah. So along Graves Avenue, again, so it's tough because those are existing access points. Um, there's, again, there's one existing access point that's open today. And so like the applicant mentioned before, there's ingress and egress, um, currently easements there that we can't require.
Sorry, we can't have any public comment at this time. Thank you.
There's, the time for public comment is closed. Thank you.
Yeah. So as, as staff, we cannot require the closure due to those ingress and egress easements. Um, if the applicant chooses to do that, um, they can basically, but that would be something that they would have to look at with their existing tenants and any other legal agreements that they have with the existing tenants on site. And so, um, and then next to that driveway, um, to the adjacent property, there's also a medical office building there. Um, there's also easements there, but there's also a direct connection to the Costco site even through that, um, driveway. So technically you would need to close that driveway as well. Um, and again, that's something that the existing landowner would have to, uh, reach out to, uh, the landowner of the adjacent property also, uh, to close that driveway as well. So, um, again, it's not something that staff can require, uh, because of the existing ingress and egress easements there, but that's, yeah.
So there are three driveways on Graves and one walking entrance. The walking entrance is going to be closed. The one near the cul-de-sac is going to be closed. And then there are two easements which prevent, which would require some sort of deal between the landlord and Costco or whatnot, if possible. Yeah. Okay, please.
Um, on this property, there's only one remaining driveway and it's at the far east side. And then there's the medical, uh, office building, which has two driveways onto, um, Graves, one on each side. Um, I do also want to point out that there is a condition of approval, and I apologize, I don't know the number of it, that, um, requires the landlord to also post signs discouraging all truck traffic on Graves, not just, um, Costco, which we're, you know, we're committed and can control our trucks, um, to post the signs and also communicate with the tenants at the center. Um, and they're committed to doing that. Um, so we, uh, it's gone a step further. Um, staff, um, put that condition of approval in and they have agreed to that.
Okay. And have there been any conversations with the landlord about the driveways? Cause it's up to the landlord to be able to-
Yes, there has been a lot. And we've met with the vice mayor and we've met with city staff on it. And they feel like with the legal obligations that they need to, uh, have one access available onto Graves.
What legal obligations would those be?
Um, that, I mean, it's been a driveway there. Both driveways have been there for over 50 years and the tenants have a legal right and as does the landlord to that access. And they, it would be very difficult for them to take that away from the individual tenants.
It would be difficult to take the, uh, take it away with, I mean, if they gave their permission, then-
They'd have to modify, you know, they'd have to get everybody's permission, um, and then modify all those legal documents and everything.
Right. Okay. Yeah. I, I'm just asking, you know, in, in theory, how could we, you know, how could you block, I guess, block off Graves, right? Cause I mean, that seems to be the big, one of the bigger concerns. And so with the other one with Prospect, um, with the intersection of Prospect and Lawrence, I mean, what are folks looking for to make that safer? Is there anything that folks have suggested, um, to staff or, you know, what is a pedestrian bridge is what, $5 million?
Uh, yeah. So pedestrian bridge, um, unfortunately not feasible. Um, that is something that, uh, the project looked into just overarching because of the community concerns. But, um, in general, first of all, the city isn't in support of it because we do want pedestrians and bicyclists and vehicles to be all at grade, um, to support our, all of our general plan goals and just multimodal goals in general. Um, and then once you add something like a pedestrian overcrossing to a road, you still have that at-grade crossing. And so you don't want to give vehicles that, that false sense of there not being pedestrians or bicycles on the road and for them to be driving even faster. And so for those, some of those reasons, we don't support it. Um, it's definitely costly. Um, it would also require a lot of, um, land dedication just to build something, um, of that size. And with the height for clearances of trucks going through along Capitol, or Lawrence Expressway in general. And just based on, you know, how that design would probably work out, um, pedestrians would generally have to travel longer distances to even get up and across. And so, you know, with students in the area and other people, people are, will want to travel the least distance basically to cross the intersection. And so for a multitude of reasons, a pedestrian overcrossing just isn't something that the city would support or we think is feasible for that area. Um, in general, for Lawrence Expressway and, um, Prospect Road, we do have a, a plan line there to, uh, remove the, um, pork chop islands at the corners of the intersection. Um, and that helps to basically shorten the crossing distances for pedestrians and basically slow down the vehicles. And so we've been working with the county on that plan line to look at ways to, um, make that intersection more pedestrian-friendly.
Okay. So it seems like there's, we've kind of gone as far as we can outside of the pork chops.
Mm-hmm.
Um, is that what they're called?
Yes.
Okay. So outside of the pork chops, which we haven't really talked about tonight, um, we've kind of gone as far as we can in making this as safe as possible or practical or feasible?
Right. Right.
Okay. All right. That's all. All the questions I have right now.
Thank you. I had just a few questions for staff. Uh, the first was with regards to this site being within an identified urban, uh, village boundary, but an area that doesn't yet have an urban village plan. I was reading in the general plan about, uh, the description of commercial corridor and commercial center urban villages. And it mentions, uh, you know, integrating a mix of high-density housing and employment and services, uh, to create dynamic urban settings. Uh, also mention of, uh, creating a consistent urban design character along the major roadways that connect San Jose, um, and enhancing, uh, existing commercial uses while transforming them into mixed-use urban village type environments. I also saw in the general plan that the, uh, Paseo de Saratoga Urban Village in particular has, I think, just north of 900 units as the planned housing yield here. Uh, so my two questions would be, are there any special considerations that the city makes for sites that are within an urban village boundary where there is not yet an adopted urban, urban village plan? And then two, um, do we feel confident that we're still able to meet our, uh, housing yield targets for this urban village if this project moves forward?
I think the intentions, a lot of the goals to do mixed uses and corridors are really the nexus for what should be an urban village plan. However, when a site does not have an urban village plan, you typically allow the commercial projects to move forward as that's one of the general plan goals for economic growth. In the case of the Paseo, it's because it only allowed commercial and they wanted to put ahead of kind of before a plan was developed, uh, to put residential, they had to do a signature project in that case. So the general plan in general encourages commercial growth that are existent, especially in commercial centers, to redevelop and other ways as well. It is that mix of housing when we develop the overall plan to integrate those uses adjacent to the centers. And even in some cases, you know, if we have enough housing designated for that urban village, even take some of those sites and allow that mixed use to occur. Um, but the urban village in general and the center plan in general still encourages commercials to move forward.
Thank you. And just to clarify, the city's perspective is that we have sufficient other sites within this urban village boundary to meet our housing goals for this village?
Yeah. So maybe just a couple of things to add to that. I think this will answer your question. Uh, so right now in unapproved urban villages, the only way you can get housing is either through that signature project process or for it to be 100% affordable. Uh, that's, that's the only way that you can develop housing. Um, this urban village plan is actually currently, it's about to kick off for this whole area and it's about to extend not just to the Paseo de Saratoga area, but all the way up Saratoga Avenue as well to be combined with one urban village. So I don't think there will be any shortage of housing-ready sites, um, for this area. Um, I do know that the idea currently is to put most of the housing along Saratoga Avenue and we want to preserve as much commercial as possible. Um, but again, that's going to be a long process with the community and the planning commission.
Thank you. And I had one other question on the EIR. I saw one of the alternatives that was identified but didn't, uh, receive further consideration was a mixed-use alternative. You know, we just spoke about what some of the requirements would be to actually get that approved in this site. Uh, but I thought it was interesting that it, uh, said in the EIR that this alternative would not allow for the development of a Costco on-site as Costco warehouses are required to be a certain size. And basically that it was not considered because it would not meet all of the project objectives. I thought that was interesting just because I read that, you know, last week down in LA, they just broke ground on a mixed-use Costco that is nearly identical in size to this Costco, but with five stories of apartments above it. Uh, so curious on the city's perspective on why, you know, we did not consider that alternative in the EIR.
Kara Hawkins, Environmental Review Team. So yes, when we are coming up with our project objectives for the EIR, um, those are largely driven by the applicant. They are the objectives that they choose to meet for this particular project. Um, so kind of irrespective of what they've been able to do elsewhere for the purpose of the EIR, um, if our analysis was showing that they are not meeting the goals of the particular objectives for this project, then that's how we kind of determine, um, whether to proceed or not. So, um, any questions beyond kind of the scope of the SEQUA realm in terms of feasibility would probably be best directed to the applicant team.
Thank you. In that case, I would actually be interested to hear an answer from the project applicant here, uh, given that we've seen, you know, some movement in this direction from other Costcos in other parts of the state.
Uh, the project that you're referring to is the Baldwin Hills Project in, in the City of Los Angeles. We are a tenant. Uh, developer is developing the residential component and invited us to, to anchor their, uh, retail component to that project. So we are part of their project. We're not spearheading that particular project.
Thank you. And I think that was all of my questions. Uh, so next up, we will go to Commissioners Lartre Noir, followed by Commissioner Oliverio.
Thank you, Chair. Um, and-
Um, and before I get into comments on this project, Alec, just want to ask you about the urban village. Does that extend all the way up to the Santa Clara border along Stevens Creek Boulevard?
Uh, I think it stops before two eighty.
Okay.
It's so, it was, if you look at the urban village map for the Saratoga urban village, we're basically just combining the two.
Right, right, okay. So it was previously two, I wasn't sure if it was two or three.
Yeah, I think it stops right at two eighty.
Okay.
If you give me like two minutes, I'll, I'll tell you.
It isn't, thank you. Uh, looking forward to that regardless of the details, but, um, so first off, I want to thank everybody who came out tonight and spoke and has been engaging with me and other officials for the past three years since this project was proposed. I lived in, excuse me, I live in District One, off of Saratoga, about two and a half miles north of the site. Uh, been going to the shopping center my entire life, so I very much do understand the area. Um, and it's something I've been thinking about a lot as we've been reviewing this project. There were a lot of concerns raised that I'd like to speak to and get input from staff to clarify some things. Um, so first off, could you talk about neighborhood community commercial and why staff's analysis is that this project is allowed within that designation?
Uh, yeah, sure. So, um, I mean, just in the most general terms, neighborhood community commercial is by and large the most broad uh, commercial land use designation that we have in this city. I mean, I think you could, if you turned on the general plan layer in, um, in San Jose, you'll find that the vast majority of our commercial land is, is neighborhood community commercial designated land. Uh, you'll find shopping centers, you'll find mom and pop shops, you'll find hotels. You'll find pretty much any type of commercial use under neighborhood community commercial.
Right, and so, um, thanks for clarifying that. I, I think the name perhaps gives the impression that it's really limited to small uses, but really, I think the staff report said that even a shopping mall would be allowed in this use, or in this designation, is that correct?
Yeah, and I, I don't know if I can point to any off the top of my head of like actual shopping malls, but yeah, I mean, basically any, any commercial use is, is pretty much allowed under the sun in neighborhood community commercial.
If I can add another distinction, right, commercial, regional commercial for NCC is really talking about the intensity of development as well, right? Regional commercial allows you to have a higher FAR than you would in a neighborhood community commercial in terms of FAR and in other aspects of it. So as far as the use, I know there's been some discussion, oh, it's a warehouse, it belongs in an industrial use. And all intentions and purposes, for the most part, it's a retail business. So therefore neighborhood community commercial is the more appropriate than going into, for example, an industrial park for a Costco to go in there. Um, so it is the broadest, we have neighborhood community commercials that allow hotels to go in, in, in terms of doing that. And we have heard arguments in the past, oh, that's not really a neighborhood community commercial use, right? Um, it, it's really just talking to the scale of the, of the use and the intensity.
Thank you. Um, and then talking about the traffic analysis, um, as we've discussed on this commission many times before, for a long time, the, um, the goal of traffic analysis was to measure level of service impacts. And in recent times, we've switched to looking at vehicle miles traveled and trying to reduce VMT where possible. Um, and this project provides a slight VMT reduction. I guess what I'm curious about is, is level of service still analyzed, even if it's not the priority? And are there, is there, are there criteria for if there's a reduction in VMT, but a greatly adverse level of service impact, is that taken into account in the analysis?
Uh, so level of service, again, is no longer a sequo metric. We do, per our policy, still look at a level of service for adverse effects. Um, and based on the analysis that we looked at for all study intersections, including Lawrence and Prospect, there were no level of service adverse effects as a result of the project.
Thank you. Um, and then Commissioner Oliverio mentioned that both under state and local policy, we no longer have parking minimums for new projects. Um, not just new projects, but also new business uses, um, cause they did previously apply to, even if you want to open a business in an existing structure. Um, but this project is still subject to the old requirements. Um, I am not super familiar with how the requirements applied in a situation like this where there's a shopping center with many tenants with shared parking. So if you could just talk through that part and then also how the calculation works for how much Costco is required and how it's being satisfied, just would be helpful to have those details.
Sure, yeah, so it can kind of go one of two ways. You could either analyze the, the use by itself as retail, which this project still meets their number. Um, or the, what, the more, I would say, appropriate use is to analyze it as an entire shopping center. And specifically in this site, they have, you know, shared access agreements and shared parking agreements. So we use that ratio for a parking ratio under the old code. Uh, I believe it's one per two hundred twenty-five square feet of floor area. Um, so it's not parceled out, that's probably the wrong term, but it's not. Yeah, it's not parceled out by tenant space, it's just the entire shopping center, that entire square footage, um, that's how we calculate it. So, you know, the Taco Bell that's there, Bikram Yoga, every single building that is included within this site, added up and then divided amongst each other.
I see.
Makes sense, yeah.
Yeah, and so that takes in, and then in meeting that number, it takes into account spaces that remain unchanged and then like spaces that will be removed by this project and the spaces that will be added by the project, all those things are taken into account.
Yeah, so we're, all we care about is what, the, the end, the end product, right?
Right, yeah.
So in this case, it's like one thousand three hundred twelve spaces, I think, is the max. So they were, they were way above what they required. I think they're required maybe in the eights.
Okay, and a, a follow-up question that hopefully is not too distracting while you're checking. Uh, the rooftop parking is counted the same as surface parking for this.
Yeah, there's no, there's no difference, we don't differentiate. Uh, it was eight hundred sixty-three required for the whole shopping center and they had about thirteen hundred spaces total.
Okay, and thank you for clarifying how that was done, cause I, I wasn't sure on the whole, when it's a shared parking arrangement like this. And there were concerns expressed about, um, you know, other businesses in the shopping center and their parking access and impacts. Um, but is my understanding then that that is a private matter between the shopping center owner and the individual tenants? That it's, does the city have a role in that?
Yeah, that's correct. So we don't have a, if you want a little bit of background, before, under the old code, we only had a role if you were, if you were providing parking off-site. So if you were sharing parking off-site, so say they were.
LA parking or something?
Say they were sharing parking with the West Valley Shopping Center next door, we would have need to actually see that agreement. If it's just between tenants in one shopping center, we're not a party to that, that's their own private agreements. And now, under the current code, we're not partying to any of those agreements. You can do whatever you want under the sun as long as you want to park, you're good.
Right, as long as you're not the SAP center, right?
Yeah.
Um, so, because they have their own, uh, they still have parking minimums, okay. Um, so let's talk about the alcohol permit. So, um, my, first off, my understanding is that's the reason we're having this hearing and that's the reason there's going to be a city council hearing is because of the alcohol permit. Otherwise, this project would just, would it go to director's hearing or would it just be something where it fits the land use and they just pull building permits?
Yeah, that's correct. So if they did not propose alcohol, um, this project did not have any significant impacts under the EIR. So this would have been a site development permit that would have gone to the planning director's hearing. Um, because they are proposing off-sale alcohol, they are over-concentrated, they require determination of public convenience and necessity. You, the planning commission, cannot make all of the findings necessary, so the city council has to be the one that makes a finding. And not only that, they have to make a finding that this project will provide an overriding public benefit.
Right, significant overriding public benefit.
You got it, yeah.
Yeah, right, okay, and that makes sense. Um, and, excuse me, um, what is a significant overriding public benefit?
In general, for a lot of grocery stores or businesses in the retail spaces, the convenience for the people that go there for the sales, the overall success of the businesses of those are generally the reasons that councils have found for public convenience and necessities for these types of projects.
Yeah, and maybe just to add to that, the only mention of alcohol in our general plan, sorry, let me get a little closer. The only mention of alcohol in our general plan is basically for us to give preference to grocery stores or, or establishments that provide fresh fruits, vegetables, meats, whatnot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And of the, there's six currently, is that the number, or seven?
There's seven licenses, Smart and Final is one of them.
Right.
Which is, I think is still technically active, but they would basically.
Right, and aside from Smart and Final, which no longer exists, do any of those other licenses, are those businesses that sell fresh meats, vegetables?
Uh, yeah, so you got Sprouts, uh, Trader Joe's.
Okay.
Target, weed, this planning commission or city council just approved Whole Foods, if that's ever built over by El Paseo.
El Paseo, yeah.
I think that might be outside of the radius, but close enough.
Right.
The only one that's not is Rod and Robbie, that's.
Okay, and so is that taken into account when determining if there's a significant overriding public benefit?
It also takes into consideration general location typically, and when you're on the corner intersections of border cities where we predominantly put a lot of commercials, this exact scenario happens all the time where you have a lot of those and depending on where you're trying to draw from. So it is something that the council could consider in terms of the, of the public convenience and necessity findings, uh, overall. But it's not atypical, I would say, of, of when you have sites that are adjacent to other cities to have this kind of concentration, especially with multiple big shopping centers and, and other, uh, general commercial locations.
Right, and I guess because I, I've heard the feedback and I kind of, you know, in the situation, I can understand where people, folks are coming from, that these, you know, rules seem arbitrary when you can make a finding to overrule them. What is the public policy goal that's trying to be accomplished by having these rules about concentration?
I think the goal really is to look, is why this process is here, right? Like every other, most of our developments, a lot of different other uses typically can be done at the director's level. It's these higher level uses that you don't have for necessarily like a daycare, gas station, or even, uh, um, you know, industrial uses don't go through this extra scrutiny with a double concentration, public convenience, and that's the additional findings. Uh, the goal is really that if you're going to look at these, you scrutinize them and see if it's really necessary in terms of, of, of those projects, right? Um, I think it's tough because when they say it's over-concentrated, it, you have to look at the context of locations located, right? If it's over-concentrated in purely neighborhood area with two liquor stores, other those uses, you know, in, in sense, do you want to encourage per se another solely convenience store with only alcohol? Which council has in terms of denied in those. Um, at least what we've ever seen is in general, uh, grocery stores, full-service stores that have alcohol, we generally have been supportive of those as we phase out on some of the other uses that don't necessarily provide all those services.
So in other words, it's, would, am I, tell me if I'm phrasing, rephrasing this in a way that still reflects what you're saying, that these over-concentration requirements are there to provide the city a public policy tool to discourage undesirable alcohol vendors, basically?
Yeah, and I think the thing you don't see in many cases, when we look at prelims, other location, we look at those plans, we're like, you probably don't want to proceed with these applications if we aren't going to be able to make these findings, right? That's why I don't think you see them here in front of you beforehand, right? Where it makes it seem like we are actually recommending approval a lot, it's because those that we typically don't recommend typically don't make it a hearing.
Sure, okay, thank you.
Commissioner, just to add to that.
Yeah, go ahead.
I think you're absolutely on point. Uh, obviously, these are long standard provisions in the municipal code and really what our, uh, regulations around alcohol sales focus on is either over-concentration or potential for high crime in these areas. And it points to the potential for public nuisance related to those alcohol sales. Now, what's changed is obviously the nature of those sales, so now what we tend to see is a lot more gas stations that say it's part of their business model. Um, we see, you know, in association with grocery, and that's why changes were made in the general plan to support alcohol sales in conjunction with, um, fresh fruits and vegetables. Um, we see less of those independent standalone liquor stores, which is, you know, generally where we've seen some of those challenges in the past. So I think that's where it came from. Uh, we've continued to try and adjust with those provisions, but obviously they're still there and present and require this process.
Mm-hmm, thank you. All right, another issue I want to ask about is, um, for a project like this, what are the requirements for frontage improvements?
Thank you, Chair, and members of the planning commission. Michelle Kimball, Senior Engineer with the Department of Public Works. Um, for this particular project, uh, the Costco project would be required to make improvements along the Lawrence Expressway, um, along its Lawrence Expressway frontage, uh, to improve the Class One Trail along Lawrence Expressway. Um, and there are also improvements for bull bouts and a new crosswalk across Graves Avenue at Fields, uh, Fields Avenue.
So those are the two things that are required?
Those, those are the improvements that will be required.
Yeah, but I, I'm sorry, but like, those are, are those the minimum requirements under city ordinance or are those, you're just describing what's going to happen?
Yes, so typically developments are required to provide, uh, frontage improvements along their property frontage, which in this case, um, again, is Graves and Lawrence Expressway.
Right, and their frontage is not the entirety of Lawrence down to Prospect, it's just part of that, like basically down to where like the Taco Bell is, right?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay, and so, but this is having improvements down all the way to Prospect, is that correct?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
But I'm saying, but my understanding is Costco is making frontage improvements all the way down to Prospect, is that correct?
Um, at this point in time, they're only conditioned to construct improvements along their frontage between Lawrence, uh, between their entrance at, uh, Lawrence Expressway at the signalized intersection up to Graves Avenue.
Okay, gotcha, now thank you for clarifying that. And, um, the money that Costco is talking about contributing to improving the intersection of Lawrence and Prospect, is that a condition of approval for this?
Um, not at this time, so, uh, to be honest, uh, we did not know about that contribution until tonight.
Okay, no, so, thank you. Um, so, no, that's important to, to clarify there. So Costco is meeting its minimum obligations, anything beyond that?
Is a voluntary monetary contribution.
Right.
Yes.
So, okay, now thanks for clarifying that. Um, okay, so let me just see if there's anything else here. Okay, so the reason I'm asking all these questions, one, because they're concerns that have been raised to me a lot and I want to make sure that we're addressing them with city staff, um, and, you know, getting the official analysis here. Um, then also, I want to talk about our role as a planning commission. We are an appointed body, we're not elected officials, um, we're appointed by the city council. And our role is to analyze whether projects that come before us meet all of the city requirements and rules and processes. And that's what we're supposed to make our decision based on. Um, we're not really supposed to make subjective decisions about whether we think a project is good or not. Um, so for me, um, you know, I, like I said, I've grown up in this part of town, I've gone to the shopping center my entire life. I do shop at Costco, I'll admit that. Um, but I think, one, what we're seeing here is this project has met the requirements that the city has set forth. I don't see a case for us making a different finding than that. And then also, but on the subjective side, um, I do think this is a tenant that's a good addition to this shopping center. I do think this is going to improve a shopping center that has been struggling with vacancies for quite some time. Osh left over five years ago at this point, I think, and.
We really can't have additional public comment at this time, thank you.
So Osh left quite some time before the.
We really, we're not going to be able to move forward with this public hearing if we have this noise from the audience.
Osh left this shopping center quite some time before this project came around. Ethan Allen moved across the street, um, CVS left, then it was Goodwill, then it was Smart and Final. Yes, Smart and Final probably was required to leave by the landlord to make way for this, but there were succession of tenants before them. Um, and then also, you know, in terms of people, folks talking about living near a Costco, um, one, it's hard to build anything in San Jose that's not near a neighborhood. That's a reality of how we built this city. Um, we've had that discussion quite a lot in this planning commission. As, um, the chair mentioned, in Los Angeles, there's a proposed, or not a proposed, there's, you know, construction on a. know, construction on a Costco location that has apartments on top of it. And then also, right here in Santa Clara, there's an apartment building going up across the street from a Costco location. So, I respectfully don't feel that Costco or retail use in general is incompatible with residences. So, I think that's all my comments right now. I'll turn it over to the commission.
Thank you. I'll turn it over to Commissioner Oliverio.
I just want to note to everyone here that the City Hall garage door was closed for parking at 7:00 and we've messaged people and it's open, so it was closed for an hour. So, if that was an inconvenience to anyone that showed up late, just, you know, I'm just, I'm the messenger, but I wanted to make sure that that was corrected and it's corrected. I did forget to mention one thing on, I'm obviously a proponent of the project, that I think the 250 to 300 jobs at their wage rate really provides a good opportunity for people that are not, don't have any advanced degrees or anything like that, and I think that provides an opportunity for them to have a good, a good job, and I think that's important. Costco's been known to be a, a good employer. I'm not a shareholder, I am a, someone who does shop there and I just go sometimes just to get the berries. With that said, I'd like to make a motion to approve the staff recommendation.
All right. We have a motion from Commissioner Oliverio to approve the staff recommendation. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
I'll give it to Commissioner Lardenois. All right, I'm not seeing any additional hands here, so I think we can, oh, sorry, Commissioner Rosario.
Sure, I'm going to support the staff suggestion, but I would like to add, when this gets passed to the city council, I would like to see the pork chop cutlets removed and as many driveways on Graves closed as possible.
Thank you. All right, we can just about move to a vote. I wanted to thank all of the members of the public who came out to speak on this topic. Obviously, a lot of passion and concern for your neighborhood, which we, is important to see. I would like to echo the comments made by Commissioner Lardenois, that, you know, our role in this commission is very limited. We look at objective standards and we try to make a call as to whether an individual project meets those standards. I will say that I hope you all also come out when this comes before city council. They are a body that has a lot more leeway to actually make decisions on these sorts of things, and I'm sure that they would also value your input here. With that, I think we can move on to a vote. Vice Chair Cantrell is absent, so we'll go to Commissioner Barocchio.
Yes.
Commissioner Bondal?
Yes.
Commissioner Bigford?
Yes.
Commissioner Lardenois?
Yes.
Commissioner Oliverio?
Yes.
Commissioner Rosario?
Yes.
Commissioner Young is absent. Myself, yes. That's seven yes, zero no, two absences, so the motion passes. And that concludes our public hearing this evening. We will now move on to referrals from city council, boards, commissions, or other agencies. Staff, do we have any referrals this evening?
We do not have any referrals.
Thank you. In that case, we will move on to good and welfare. Do we have a report from city council?
Yes, thank you, Chair. So, a number of items went to city council yesterday that the commission had seen. So, on consent, we approved the plan development rezoning permit and subdivision for the project at 1581 Minnesota. Also on consent yesterday, which the commission didn't see, was an application for designation of the Grace Baptist Church just down on East San Fernando Street as a city landmark. So, they-
Sorry, I couldn't hear that last one.
My apologies. Grace Baptist Church, yes, was approved as a city landmark on city council on consent yesterday. On the public hearing, there were three projects, all of which were before the commission. After additional public outreach, city council approved the Monopole on South King Road. In addition, the project on Miller Avenue got approved by city council. And lastly, the Shealy Alameda Historic District also got approved.
Thank you. Do we have anything on subcommittee formation, reports, or outstanding business?
We do not.
Okay. Anything on commission calendar and study sessions?
So, nothing right now. I will just sort of note, just as a reminder, that support staff have reached out, I believe, on potential dates for a planning commission retreat. So, I think that's a great opportunity to talk about upcoming opportunities for study sessions and additional topics that we might want to cover.
Thank you. And then, finally, as always, any comments or questions from commission members for the public record? Not seeing any hands, so we will adjourn at 9:30 PM. Thank you, everyone.